All righty, good morning everybody. We are in budget workshop session here for March the sixth. Isn't that today? Yeah, 2023. Call the meeting to order and any items from the public? No, I do not public, I guess we're it, aren't we? So we'll prove the agenda, any motion here for that?
To move.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We are in the workshop. Everybody's had a chance to see what the revenue projections were. If you get a chance to take a look at them too and all that good stuff. Normally Gary, Doug does this as a pretty good job, so this is gonna be my first attempt at it.
You need a ten minute speech.
I hereby declare the county in good standing order. But anyway, I think we're gonna be very, very well equipped this year. The budget's gonna be strong, we're gonna have good revenues. I think I want to stay kind of conservative on them, just in case. The projections are out there, everybody's kind of had a chance to take a look at them on their own. I know that Steve and H D, y'all get together on a little bit on Saturday and make everything look pretty good for you. All righty, Jim, any questions, comments? You're second in line when it comes to this, when it comes to how many times we've done this budget. This is better, yeah. So I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Gary, we're gonna go through the items of them. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just wanted to say how much Alan put into this and he's not here to present it.
You stole my thunder because that was gonna be what I do. So just so everyone knows, much like we talked when we talked about the bond ratings and things last year. Understand, even though Mr. Davis isn't here, this is his baby, the presentation that we're gonna walk through today. The projected items are those items that he spent the last twelve months living and breathing and preparing you for the next budget cycle. So as we work through these, not only do you have the trending that we have done for the past six or seven years, but you have his knowledge and experience. So when you look down this projected column, know that these are numbers that Alan has blessed. The first number to discuss, if anybody has any questions or concerns, is your unreserved fund balance. As you all know, those are the monies left over to include the cash at the bank after all expenses from the prior year. This current fiscal year, it was at five nine, Alan's proposing five point five million. Does anyone have any question? I can just run down through them and you can stop if you have questions or we can just go over them. The largest single revenue source for you is your property taxes for the current year. You can see you're at sixty four point five seven percent of what is projected. You collected fifteen point eight to date. Alan is proposing twenty six points, twenty six million, six hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty six dollars. That is about two million dollars over the last fiscal year. I think it's important to note that you did get hit by rollback. So the true, the estimated collection was about two point five million. Your current levy rate is fourteen point oh six. You're going to reduce that to thirteen point eight one. That nets you twenty one million, three hundred twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars in real estate taxes. It's four million, five hundred fifty two dollars, six hundred and thirty three, excuse me, four million, five hundred fifty two thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars in personal property and a million, oh thirty six, one eighty three in W W. So twenty six, nine oh nine, one ninety three.
If I'm not mistaken, twenty six, six eighty nine of projected tax revenue.
That was our budget about twelve years ago when I started in two thousand and seven. That was the budget, the entire budget. You live in, I don't have to tell the vibe of you, you live in a growth community, so you can see what happens. You know, the demands on this money is when we get over to the expense side, we find there's a lot to be desired. There are a lot of people needing this. So if everyone agrees, the twenty six million, six ninety eight, nine fifty six for current year tax revenue. Prior year taxes are set as a million, you can see we're at eight seventy five, six sixty three as of December thirty one, or eighty seven point five seven percent. So I guess I should have prefaced the whole thing, remember how reserved Alan is and conservative? We're on the revenue side of here, so I need you to be conservative than it is to be aggressive.
And the responsibility, if we are not.
Correct, but it's your pocket.
It's my pocket. So guys, we are.
We're the goal.
Yeah, right, just anything that, what is, how many, what is it?
Three percent.
Three percent.
Anything over three percent.
Anything over three percent, we pull out our checkbook score.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna run that close.
Three percent of fifty million, that's not bad.
On your, on your day, yeah.
My day is. Supplemental taxes, you can see we're at a hundred and one percent of projected last year. We're at four thirty one, nine eighty five, Alan's recommending four twenty five. Supplemental taxes are those, I do know, Jim, I read it and I forgot. I'm gonna lie rather than, sorry. I did know, I read it last night because I wondered the same thing. See the point? I hope they were the late Davids from the previous year that could very well be.
That's what I thought it was, right?
Yeah, that's anything above that you would normally pay. The redemption from the state auditor's office. You can see it.
Alrighty, good morning, everybody. We are in budget workshop session here for March the sixth. Isn't that today? Yeah, 2023. Call the meeting to order and any items from the public? No, I do not public, I guess we're it, aren't we? So we'll prove the agenda. Any motion here for that?
To move.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We are in the workshop. Everybody's had a chance to see what the revenue projections were. You get a chance to take a look at them too and all that good stuff. Normally, Gary, Doug does this as a pretty good job, so this is gonna be my first attempt at it.
We need a ten-minute speech.
I hereby declare the county in good standing order. But anyway, I think we're gonna be very, very well equipped this year. The budget's gonna be strong. We're gonna have good revenues. I think we, I wanna stay kinda conservative on them, just in case. They, the projections are out there. Everybody's kinda had a chance to take a look at them on their own. I know that Steve and H D, y'all get together on, a little bit on Saturday and make everything look pretty good for you.
We did.
Alrighty, Jim, any questions, comments? You're second in line when it comes to this, when it comes to how many times we've done this budget, this is.
Better.
Better, yeah. So I'm gonna kinda turn it over to Gary. We're gonna go through the items of them. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I just wanted to say, how much Alan put into this? And he's not here to present it.
Well, you stole my thunder, because that was gonna be what I do. So just so everyone knows, much like we talked, when we talked about the bond ratings and things last year. Understand, even though Mr. Davis isn't here, this is his baby, the presentation that we're gonna walk through today. The projected items are those items that he's spent the last twelve months living and breathing in preparing you for the next budget cycle. So as we work through these, not only do you have the trending that we have done for the past six or seven years, but you have his knowledge and experience. So when you look down this projected column, know that these are numbers that Alan has blessed. The first number to discuss, if anybody has any questions or concerns, is your unreserved fund balance. As you all know, those are the monies left over to include the cash at the bank after all expenses from the prior year. This current fiscal year, it was at five nine, Alan's proposing 5.5 million. Does anyone have any question? I can just run down to them and you can stop if you have questions, or we can just go over them. The largest single revenue source for you is your property taxes for the current year. You can see you're at sixty-four point five seven percent of what is projected. You're, you collected fifteen point eight to date. Alan is proposing twenty-six points, twenty-six million, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. That is about two million dollars over the last fiscal year. I think it's important to note that you did get hit by rollback. So the true, the estimated collection was about two point five million. Your current levy rate is fourteen point oh six. You're going to reduce that to thirteen point eight one. That nets you twenty-one million, three hundred twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars in real estate taxes. It, four million, five hundred fifty-two dollars, six hundred and thirty-three, excuse me, four million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars in personal property, and a million, oh thirty-six, one eighty-three in W W. So twenty-six, nine oh nine, one ninety-three.
If I'm not mistaken, twenty-six, six eighty-nine of projected, uh, tax revenue.
That was our budget about twelve years ago. When I started in two thousand and seven, that was your budget. The entire budget.
Entire.
You live in, I don't have to tell the five of you, you live in a growth community, so you can see what happens. You know, the demands on this money is when we get over to the expense side, we find there's a lot to be desired. There are a lot of people needing this. So if everyone agrees, the twenty-six million, six ninety-eight, nine fifty-six for current year tax revenue. Prior year taxes are set as a million. You can see, we're at eight seventy-five, six sixty-three as of December thirty-one, or eighty-seven point five seven percent. So I guess I should have prefaced the whole thing, remember how reserved Alan is and conservative. We're on the revenue side of here, so I need you to be conservative than it is to be aggressive.
And the responsibility, if we are not.
But it's your pocket.
It's my pocket. So guys, we are. Yeah, right. Just anything that, what is, how many, what is it?
Three percent.
Three percent.
Anything over three percent.
Anything over three percent, we pull out our checkbook score.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna run that close.
Three percent of fifty million, that's on that.
On your, on your day, yeah.
Supplemental taxes, you can see, we're at a hundred and one percent of projected last year. We're at four thirty-one, nine eighty-five, Alan's recommending four twenty-five. Supplemental taxes are those, I do know, Jim, I read it and I forgot. I did know. I read it last night, 'cause I wondered the same thing. See, the point is, I'm not lying. Well, they were the late Davids from the previous year, that could very well be.
That's what I thought it was, right? Yeah, that's, anything above that the, that you would normally pay.
The redemption from the state auditor's office. You can see, it's a big number. When you get into this, three or four thousand dollars and fifty-six, fifty million dollars, they tend to run together. Leans, I guess there's, we must have identified an opportunity for two thousand dollars there. It's not documented, but we just say two thousand dollars, okay? Tax stipendals, interest in publications, you know what that is? We budgeted, last year we're ninety-four point seven, ninety-four point seven percent of, it's three fifty's a safe bet. I'm running the numbers there, I'm trying to talk about it here, sorry. Property tax transfer, Mr. Catlett's intimate with that. As you well know, of the ten percent, or the ten-year plan to kinda get us the second third, this is year.
This will, the new year will be year three, so it will be a third percent if it don't change the bar.
Which we all know, down there, Steve, they're, that's, they're trying to change it to make it that third almost gonna be it.
What's the new, what's the deal they're dealing with right now? They wanna change it to?
By twenty twenty-five, we could be getting it all to a hundred percent instead of waiting seven more years. Ten percent has to go to the clerk's order to upgrade voting, but once you get whatever the standards they set.
You're there.
There, you're there. You're almost there, you may be there.
You are.
And you get to keep it.
Yep, you are. So the three.
This is a big deal. This is a big deal. You're talking some years over two, a couple of years ago, it was three million dollars to save this year. And it's been averaging two million or more, so it's a big deal.
Yeah.
We will see that happen here.
You saying this number here is thirty percent of the total?
That, the two point eight is eighty-four percent.
Oh, it's eighty-four percent. What, what H D's saying, eighty-four percent is where we are now.
Correct, that is end of January.
And so let's get it, thirty percent, same here as us, right?
Oh, I thought you acted the, the number.
No, no, that's right.
We get, we get one third, and we're at the third year of the second third, it's over ten years, so we're, we're at twenty percent?
Or twenty, yeah.
Of the, whether they're having, it's a ten, it was first, it's spread out for ten years, basically.
Right. So if that thing passes, how much more is this potentially?
Well, you, that's.
It'll be the whole state share in a few years' time.
So another million and a half? Oil and gas tax, as you well know, gases, Ked, Kedzu in West Virginia, if you've been on the other side of state, there's some, you know, some of those little tiny, little tiny.
Congress gets.
Oh, exploding at the seams. I mean, if you're getting, you know, we're estimating five hundred thousand. We mentioned, we're always conservative, so you see, we're at six oh seven, that's end of January. So we're probably gonna see a million dollars. Wine and liquor.
Well, Jim alone is contributing.
So that's the same, that's the same.
Except for it's not a state purchase. Hey, I gotta cure you of that.
Who the hell is he talking about?
Honey.
So wine and liquor, the same projection as last year, as you can see, trending well, should not be an issue.
Well, Dan's not here.
Dan's not here.
Sorry, Gary.
That's okay. Hotel motel, as you know, to date, that split half between Parks and Rec and half between the C V B. The C V B by law has to get half. With construction in the north end coming this year, you know, we're at ninety-eight percent of the projected this year. Realistically, that's gonna be a seven-figure number next year.
It's gonna be a major issue.
On target to, well.
Well on target to do that, yes, sir.
Good for them.
And you have some liberties with that on the second half. The first half has to go.
It couldn't go to a better place than what it's at.
I think.
Well, good.
I agree. Panel to taxes, those are your pilot agreements in place. We should be intimate with where that's going to come in. Anthony and that team has the documents in hand, so we're projecting six hundred fifty thousand. Federal grants, those include the Joe Tip, HIDA, the HIDA catalyst, the Adult Drug Board, COSAP, so all of those total, pretty good target on those.
I thought that'd be a hundred.
Well, that's what we know. You know how well your grant form does?
Yeah, I mean, every week you see me have another grant.
Well, it is hard, Jim, but this is what, what we put in our line, right, what you know, what we know. So what's coming in, I think after, after this line, it goes.
Well, that's why you're a hundred and eight percent of current projections. Mr. Catlett?
I have a question on back to the pilot.
Yes, sir.
Can you identify to me which, which companies are paying that now, and which ones have?
Like verbally right now?
Yeah.
I mean, you have Procter and Gamble, Macy's. Argos. Procter and Gamble didn't have one? Procter and Gamble has a chain, again. Clorox, or Argos, does it? We have the list, if you'd like to see it.
You can get it to me later.
Shannon, go ahead, Phil.
I'd just like to have, I'd like to have the list later, then, and then show I have knowledge of it. And if there's some have expired, I would think it didn't join.
Some haven't started.
Some haven't started.
I don't know of any expiration that has actually expired. I don't know that.
But I was thinking they were timed things on them.
They are, yeah. There.
You can just get that later, I'd just like to know from my own personal knowledge.
We can?
And then how much of, how much worth it all?
We can? We have all that. Federal grants, we discussed, the same with the state grants. Now, the state grants are D H H R, your Q R T team, your S B I R T team, I don't know what that is. Media Corrections, Justice Reinvestment, Workforce West Virginia, and COSAP yet again. So those are all numbers that you know you have. We're trending right on with that number, so that's just to say, we probably didn't have any awards in the fiscal that would change, so that's why it's trending to date. The sheriff's earnings, that's a number that's given in the code. It's created, we have twenty-five thousand in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-five thousand in twenty-two, twenty-three.
You can safely up that one.
You, but it's all, you know, what they do, service, revenue they generate, coffee, it's just work they do and revenue generating. It rolls back into your general revenue accounts. The grants, Gary.
Circle, the grants that don't, didn't include ARPA.
Correct.
That is correct, right. ARPA wasn't included, then maybe.
That's a special revenue from that side.
Right.
The county clerk and circuit clerk's earnings, both the same, coffee services that they provide that they charge fees for. You can see the county clerk, the county clerk was projected at four forty. And they're at forty-eight percent, so trending down just a little bit. Circuit clerk was projected at one fifty, way down. Those are out of your control, those are just, depends on the office and what's going on.
So I see that's almost some of that uncollected fees.
It is.
That you can't go after. You can go after, but you're just trying to get a lot out of time.
They just haven't done the work, right? So the coffee counts were down, or services were down. It isn't like it's uncollected, right? It's down. They're not payable, seeable, excuse me.
Would the change in the circuit clerk make a difference?
Rents and concessions, so as you well know, this is for rents of your buildings and concessions you get. You have income right now, where you bill the nine one ten, you bill the fee for rent. You bill the D R C for rent, which has not been done yet this year.
We've lost a couple.
Yes, the region nine. I just, you checked out, I believe that might be.
No, no, okay. We'll go ahead, Secretary of State.
You are, Secretary of State will be one, and that's up the negotiation. You're not there yet, but there's some discussion of that, and this will be decided after the negotiation that takes. Okay, it's very, you get.
I want to share that with the public.
However, it's not like the county lost, Jim, that. It is being spent in other county entities.
Yeah, they're there.
Their revenues, yeah, sure. It's not up there without a fraction.
The, your franchise, that is your franchise, your cable franchise agreement with Comcast. You'll remember, I think it was back in twenty eighteen, that we made an adjustment to the franchise fee and raised it. And that, we were getting just over six hundred, seven hundred thousand. We're projecting one one this year. I mean, as, as Comcast expands the network and people, soon services, we just see that blow up.
So do we select just one of those?
No, the law allows you, it's not just one. You actually have a company right now that is asked for a franchise agreement. The process to implement the franchise agreement, we have to go out the bid for interested parties, so it's on the to-do list. But no, it's not, it's not just.
What company does that by law?
Signal.
The company that's reached out that.
This company, the company that's asked does provide cyber offensive services. They aren't the one that, they're one of the ones in play. They have to provide cable television, that's.
So what's the benefit of him to sign one of us as a franchisee?
Well, in order to provide television, cable television to a house, they have to have that franchise.
So right now, there's only one?
That's right. They've been direct TV and, you know, but they're not cable, because that.
Yes, the internet will be one in the future.
This is just cable.
Just entertainment.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's a solid.
But the more we add, the more one of these might come down.
Well, if you, well, the more you add, it would go up, because they would, if they're gonna go and play, they're gonna serve more people. In theory, you think if they were gonna identify a target area, then they'd wanna get people that don't have a map, right?
Right, but some of the people that have the other may switch to the other.
And, but that agreement, that money should still come to you, it shouldn't go away.
Right, it's just through a different entity. Like, I'm saying, this number might go down, and a new number add in.
Correct. It could, yes, sir.
Would, well, I'm really thinking way out, with the internet TV.
Does that hurt you?
Yeah, I thought that would, yeah, because of smart TVs.
A lot of people, that's all they have.
That's all they have, the streaming.
My contract's like three hundred dollars more.
Yeah. Mine's over that, yeah. It's not, I care. But Sherry says, we had to get something for the grandkids to watch, and so you gotta step up that net tier package. So I get to watch one twelve square pants.
Gary, there's another set of channels.
So the ones in city, do they get that? The city gets that for all the city residents, or is that average?
Okay, we get it for the city and the whole county, it's a franchise.
Can we get any money from my cell towers? Water business.
Yeah, it puts on property that we have, yes. As we now have.
Right.
We don't, we don't. It's not a franchise deal.
But we, we have these cell towers on our property.
We have, no, we have towers on our property, but they're probably safety towers. It's.
Except for the business we're in.
So we've had.
As I know, the city, like, they have a contractor.
They do sell towers. We do, we had a, we had a cell company ask, we could, they could be on our water tower here in parking lot, right here in front of the building. But that's, that same company built their own tower, it's somewhat closed and saturated with sewage, so they got the dog water.
They never built it there.
Right.
We, we were gained to get over twenty thousand dollars a year from that, if they would build it, if they did.
Oh, wouldn't.
They have one, they have one, the city has one at Lake Thomas right now.
And then the one that, that was going, one of which is Ambrose, that was built, but it's never happened.
Is that the only one that disguises a tree?
Yes, it's gonna look like a tree.
They were talking about that one.
And it'll stick out like a sore thumb on bed warmer.
I told them to put lights on it, then at Christmas time. That still didn't work, they didn't want it.
Your inspection fee, so that's the work, your building permits, planning, electrical inspections and such. You, you have them currently set at one point two eight million. Proposing the same, we all know where the economy is right now. I think we're seeing a little tick down, even though we're trending almost on target where you want to be. Probably safe to say, we'll make it where we are again next year. But at ten percent thirty-year notes, you gotta imagine how it might slow down, but.
Is there also inspections when we put in shifts and buildings?
All that, anytime they do an inspection, that's wrapped up in that.
So that all will come right after the, right?
It does.
Are those fees less, or the inspection fees?
The schedule, it's a, they're.
Yes.
They're not the same, but there's an entire public schedule for it. Matter of fact, that's one of the items that I believe that is a topic of discussion, Eddie. They haven't been revisited for many, many years.
Then, yeah, that news, new point.
A R P fees, those are revenues generated from the fee assessed by the D M B on interstate trucks that distributed monthly by the state auditors, collection of these.
Think that, you go around.
It's trending up a little.
That's if you register a truck in West Virginia. If you wanna circumvent that, you just register in Oklahoma, someplace like that. There, there's no, no revenue gain. All you gotta do is have a mailbox out there, or a business that actually does the, do, the meaningful mileage, you know, where, where you purchase fuel. I mean, it's a company out there that does it all over the United States. And there's one that does it right down the road, Harrisburg. Harrisonburg.
Forty-five thousand fine fees and court costs. Those, those are collected, fines, fees and court costs collected for statute board violations.
That's what I was thinking about, that it's hard to. It's, there's a astronomical number, I think that Doug and we even talked about it before, that's laying out there to try to go and collect it. There's no way we're gonna collect it at this point.
Well, I got a speeding ticket, I ran a stop sign in Woodman County about five years ago, and it was like a seven dollar fifty cent penalty, but the, but the fee on the ticket is like a hundred fifty dollars.
Crazy. Yeah, you get a speeding ticket in Maryland, fifty dollars paid now. I got one over the road, it was two hundred and twenty dollars. Right? And I wanna talk to the lady on the funding board in county, she's like, yeah, we say the same thing, it's ridiculous, these fees, it was all, all fees.
Now, the one in Maryland, was that a photo?
Yeah.
No.
No?
They reduced it to within a ten mile an hour of a speed limit, fifty dollars, paid.
But, but an officer pulled you over for, okay.
Wow.
Yeah, we need to tell NACIS.
Well, no.
Well, no, they, they marked in the twenty to ten miles over.
That makes support cost.
Yeah.
But it's almost a hundred fifty.
Right.
So the fifty thousand dollars, jail fee, state reimbursement, this one's a, if you don't know, this is the inmate days calculation. Depending on how many, just, just some numbers to note. In sixteen seventeen, we had seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one inmate days. And then in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirteen inmate days. So just goes to show you, you know, how that works, but a hundred sixty thousand dollars. No. Interest on accounts, that's self-explanatory, fifty thousand. Mr. Catlett, you mentioned ARPA money and cares money. If you look at the interest collected, we're at two hundred and eighty-three percent projection.
It's money we're earning off of those accounts.
But that's, you're getting rid of it, so sheriff's commission. That's, that's given by state law.
Sheriff gets a commission off the taxes.
That's right.
So we, we collected, showed us revenue, then we paid.
And he doesn't, and it's fifteen.
But it doesn't matter whether the tax base grows or not, he's at fifteen thousand, that's our, that's what he's done.
That's right.
That's supplemental.
It's his, on the expense side, it's sheriff's supplemental income, it's fifteen thousand, and that, that's what it's.
But he has to collect a certain amount within a certain percentage of a certain day to get that.
He does eighty-five percent.
Yes.
For collecting the eighty-five percent. And he gets it. Gary, what's the date for one of the ARPA funds that have to be committed by? Isn't it, any, do you know, is it twenty twenty-seven, ARPA, when's ARPA have to be committed and? It's nowhere near twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, it could be. Maybe end of twenty-six is why I said twenty-seven, but it's, it's, we're not there. Gaming income, so on the gaming income, this is for the gaming taxes to the counties, that's the local stuff. So that's fifty thousand, and the video lottery is the piece you get from, you know, racetracks and gaming. from, you know, racetracks and gaming machines, the tracks is four hundred, you see the local, remember, remember when the Smokey Woman is passed and everyone thought, they were, well, there you go.
Right.
It's lacking. Planning, in twenty-one, twenty-two, it was a hundred and seventy-seven, we collected three seventy-six, in twenty-two, twenty-three, two hundred, and you received eight hundred and sixty-six, which is eighty-three percent of your trending.
Yep.
Eddie, you're on the planning commission, so, I mean, probably two hundred's a good number.
Yeah, we're seeing a big slowdown there.
Even though the arson's still projects floating around.
Same way with the water board, their, their projects going to zero.
The charges to other entities, that's goods and service rendered to others, it was seventy-five thousand, in twenty-one, twenty-two, you collected one fifty-five, in twenty-two, twenty-three, it was seventy-five, you collected thirteen, there's been some changes there in, in the way that we bill and receive, so the, you're gonna see some changes, like IT services to get billed and things like that, they've moved it down to three eighty-two, which is refunds and reimbursements, so.
So is that, is that just IT charges?
No, sir, no, sir, so, safe, the reimbursement for the safer grant comes in there?
The next, we're talking about refunds and reimbursements, Steve.
IT services, safer grant, which is a big number, and anything else that we have that, that comes in from the outside that we bill for services, so.
No, I meant the charges to other entities, is that all IT?
No, that's, that's the change, we discussed that last year, right now, all of that's in three eighty-two refunds and reimbursements, but we're gonna look at modifying that charge to other entities next year.
So you kinda, kinda moved line three eighty-one and three eighty-two?
A little bit, not all of it, you know, charge to other entities, like if we actually bill for services, on the fleet side, on the IT side, we're gonna look at potentially moving that to three eighty-one, but for right now, it's in three eighty-two, and the big chunk of that three eighty-two is the reimbursement of the safer grant, where Baker Heights has the grant, they took.
Yeah, that's, that's done.
Baker Heights, which, is it a new, is there's another big one that is coming into that, cost, cost. Okay, well, what's eighty-one then, three eighty-one? The, the three eighty-one, right now, it, it stood, just the description, and I can't speak to the exact revenue from it, Steve, charges for goods and services rendered to others, I don't know, I can tell you just on the IT side, IT and fleet, we billed around seven hundred thousand dollars last year, so they're projecting, obviously based on the three-two-five, projecting in three eighty-two.
Well, that number was huge in twenty twenty-one.
In twenty twenty-one, seven hundred and fifty thousand, collected four point one three, and in twenty-two, twenty-three, budgeted.
I'm sorry, the year before that.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, and that probably was, when was the last year of the safer ready, would that have been it, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Oh, the grants that come in, VCH, are put into that account.
There you go.
And then move out, distribute.
All that.
All the grant deposits that come in, like for, for state and federal grants, not federal, but state, all the state grants, go into oh one three two.
That has to be.
The state makes us set up one account, and it has half one account, so we put it into the ones of one three two, and then we do, Alan moves those through state budget revisions into the accounts they should go to, but a lot of that ends up in that, all of that ends up in that camera.
So a lot of that money from the pay, is money that we gave to people out of the office.
Possibly.
Yeah. There'd have to be office funds to get to that now, I mean, it's not gonna have any dollars.
Well, that would have been to bring in the money in, when it was positive, it came from the state that's our cost.
So, so CARES, so CARES money.
That was the CARES money.
Yes, yes. I was gonna say, like, to estimate seven hundred coming in, oh my god, and that's wrong.
It comes in and gets paid now.
And then the magistrate court reimbursement, like we talked before, that's what you get from the state for the space for magistrate court, your very name, Dr. Disher. He did, right? Alright, so, the sum total for revenue estimate is forty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. It's double. Yeah, when I started, yeah, when I started back in two thousand and seven, it was under twenty-five thousand, twenty-five million. And some of that's to the effort of the council and your grants department, I mean, you, you snagged some big stuff to get going, but, I mean, anytime you get hit by a rollback, you know you're still, it's the code and that effort, you know, just to keep you going too fast, really, if you look at it, I mean, you surely could have used the extra half million dollars to get the rollback to. Do it easily.
And we'll never, ever get it back, at, at the rate that we're allowed to get it back, it'll never.
Unless we decide to vote for a rate increase, which we have ability to do, and get only an effort, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you.
You couldn't get it back.
We're all squirreling right now.
No, you could, yeah.
But it makes us look good now.
Yeah.
Nothing makes me look good, Steve.
We're cutting.
Not when you come in dressed in a tie.
Yeah, really. It's the first day.
Yeah, I like to take a vote. In, in history, you've been here, Gary, there's never been a situation where they were even close to consider a rate increase.
The levy rate?
Yeah.
I've seen the levy rate increase.
We did it once, to only give raises to the prosecutor attorney's office. And we can get into detail.
Ten plus years ago.
Nah, yeah, yeah, and I can get into detail after.
I wasn't here for that, Doug.
It was, yeah, I mean, it was, who was it, it was Bill, me, Doug, Lane.
Yeah, it would have been probably what, twenty, maybe twenty-twelve.
No, it was, it was past that.
It was twenty-fourteen.
Yeah.
That's right, it was.
Me, and I was off on vacation.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
Any, any other questions or concern on the general county money, forty-nine nine sixty-two nine fifty-six?
Steve, when you asked about ARPA, Tracy Gillings listens, and she texted me, she said twenty twenty-four is committed, twenty twenty-six is completely spent for ARPA, and twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four is all money committed for ARPA, all money has to be committed for ARPA.
Well, either this, 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 we have.
All be committed.
Committed.
And twenty twenty-six.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Spent by twenty-six, though, committed by twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, it has to be spent, twenty twenty-four has to be committed.
But by the end of next year, it has to be committed.
Has to be committed.
Right, the next, next year.
Next county.
Calendar on that?
Texted me and let me know if she has questions.
So, Gary, sir? Office forty-one, the pilot's. There you go, Steve, there's your pilot report.
These, I'm making one each of you, but, this doesn't include Ecolab, which is just sent for Jack, and then seventy-seven thousand something, and Shenandoah.
Hotel.
Hotel, has, there's a small, it's like fifteen thousand.
They sent.
But that's, that's the total, then it would break down into how much it gets to each, where it has municipality on there, that's actually what's with the state. But that, the form of the sheriff's office has to send every year. So that's for tax year twenty-two.
So why does it stop?
They have, because they have a hundred percent of payment until.
If there's a Q and A.
Q and A, yeah.
Yeah.
Come on, let that installation company take extension.
Right, installation.
Exactly.
Are you speaking?
Yeah.
I appreciate it. So there will be a number of them coming on board, Laura.
This is, yeah.
Those are the ones that have had, had to pay for the twenty twenty-two tax, and this is separate from any direct quality plan, so, where it's don't go through the tax office, it gets distributed to taxing boards, but I can send you a spreadsheet there, how they, how they would phase in, the numbers, most of you don't, won't know, but it's a percentage of what the assessed, what the tax would be, so, levy rates can't be better quantified, and I have no idea what the depreciation schedules are of all this equipment, so it's, it's kinda tough to estimate it exactly.
And then on the coal severance side, thinking, we're, as, as you see, I mean, we're projecting three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two twenty.
Yeah, you're two hundred and thirteen percent of the current projection, there's no guarantee in that stuff, Steve mentioned earlier, in a conversation, you know, we probably could easily double that, well, according to current projection, you could, but the efforts of the federal government and its fund and whatever on coal, equally a dangerous proposition to look at increasing those revenues, you could always keep it in the back of your mind, and as that comes in, you can do it, or whatever, but I think it's a safe bet to leave it at three hundred and five, so, you're just over fifty million.
Well, two years ago, it was only a hundred and fifty, so, like.
I could change that quickly. It can impact, and it's, if, if my boss were sitting here, what he would have just said to you, never overestimate these things, so, the safer are the, the chances of, whoa, guess, probably be more safer to say it's gonna sustain.
For a while.
But they're after that too, right?
Yeah, so, if there's anything that's.
Yeah, fossil fuel.
Correct.
Correct.
You're a fossil fuel state.
So if no more questions for revenue, we can move on to how you get rid of it, Mr. President, does that work for you?
That was my question, I was gonna propose, everybody's okay with the revenue side, and we shall move on to expenditures.
Everybody has their MCH.
I can see that, I don't know if you see them on the table.
I can make it bigger, make sure everybody sees it, yeah, so what I did, I assume those were your, your revenue numbers for HD and Steve, your first time through, everybody's got, you can't, it's kind of maroon, but those, that's your current balance, as we start assigning expenses, you're gonna watch those red numbers go down, when those maroon numbers get to zero, it's good, if you guys allocate it, when they start going negative, you, you offer more than you have, so, typically, the president of the leaders would go down through here and talk about, the column one is, is the recommendation from Alan, I have everybody's budget presentation, I have all the read ahead and all the backup, so, all the ones.
If, if, yeah, see, see our names up there at the top, that's your column.
Which one's red, the second one or the first one?
The second one's, so the very first one is.
I, I can't see the color of that.
So the very top, the very, the very top is the revenue, HD, and the, the second number down is the revenue minus the expenditures, and as you start allocating, you'll see it.
Yeah, he would.
Well, I'm just saying, the only color I see on that page is now, orange square in the top left, the rest of it looks white.
That's really not on.
That's really not on, it looks like yellow to me.
It's the only color on that page.
It'd be like Van a White here, oh, he moved it, this is the red, HD, right here, oh, right here.
Come on, Hannah, do it.
This is the red.
Okay, gotcha. There are three Ts.
So if we find, if we find.
There you go, so there's.
See how, see how it'll subtract.
I got you, I just, y'all said the red number, I didn't see no red.
It was unintentional, HD, sorry. So if y'all can see that, I mean.
I, I know what you're talking about now, it doesn't matter if I can see the color of it.
So for purposes of the county council, let me get, give my other manager, for purposes, let me make this statement, Alan requested to the department heads to, to request flat funding if they could, he is always conservative, he prides himself on ensuring that the people who answer to him run their ships as tight as they can, so, for the most part, ninety couple percent of all of your county council departments are gonna be flat funded, minus your debt service stuff, we'll get to it, there's your sols and bonds and things like that, but most of these requests will be flat.
And where you see an increase from last year this year, was the raises.
The seventy percent raises. That's right, so, and so you're.
So you're, so flat funding doesn't look like it's flat, but it is because the raises were getting run, is that correct, Gary?
That is absolutely correct, that is absolutely correct.
I just have one question about this one.
Sure.
That includes the money that we pay the consultants.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's budgeted in again, is that, that's on a calendar year though, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, well, come back up again.
Yeah, so it's based on a calendar year, but what you're saying, it's budgeted in for this new budget.
Right, it may be based on a calendar year, but it's budgeted fiscal, you, you don't encumber it from year to year, so, this fiscal that starts July one will include that contact if you so choose, and I'll, I'll tell you.
We will be paying a half of this new year, because her contract runs to seven.
That's correct, right, and just, just, just as an example, your contracted services for the county council, on professional services, it's two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
And then there's expenses that are on top of that, but that.
They would all come out of that, because it all come out of line.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you aren't paying expenses when you pay that, you're reimbursing them as a service.
So that includes, that's your that.
Okay.
Two eleven.
Two eleven, one seventy-seven.
And that's our, that's our only contracted.
I can't speak to that, I don't know exactly what expenses, I mean, I could run a report and tell you, but I don't know, you have lots of professional services that you pay, if you have.
Yeah.
A lot of team services, we're not missing auditors, but anything professional, you need some engineering work, or it could come out of professional or contracted, it could come out of either one.
Yeah, and that's all right, Gary, you don't have to.
Okay.
This is obviously the largest one.
Does anybody, does anybody have any concerns funding it for Alan's recommendation?
No.
I'm good. Be a little slower, because usually Alan does the talking, I do the driving, so, bear with, the county clerk, again, the request from the clerk, everybody was at the county clerk's budget presentation, for purposes of funding, it does include the fifteen percent pay increases, or it does not include any monies for pay requests that the clerk may have had.
So, his request, yeah.
His request, it's, so the request is a million, or the proposed funding is a million oh ninety-two, four oh five.
That's not included elections.
That does not include elections, this is just the county clerk, the one at Old Court House. Any concerns, and they want any changes to that one?
Why does it say, I understand.
Because he did reduce, if you remember his budget presentation.
I see it, yeah, yeah, he reduced.
That's correct, yes.
That's right, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, circuit clerk, the proposed funding is a million, two forty-two, oh twenty-one, you can see that that's ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollar difference from last time, but that again is the, the fifteen percent increase. So a million, two forty-two, zero two one.
I'm good.
She did ask for your position to talk. I don't, I don't think so, but I'll wait a second. Sorry. No, sir?
She did not.
She did not. P prosecuting. She did.
Sure I did, we'll get another.
Sheriff's tax office, this is across the hall, two include salaries, eight fifty-nine, eight thirty-nine, that includes eighty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars of the fifteen percent increase, but again, flat funded.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Good.
If not, if not, it's great, whatever, buddy, I'm gonna take a break in court, so.
The prosecuting attorney, um, as President just mentioned, uh, there was a request for, uh, a staff increase, uh, it was flat funded, other than that, it's three hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars above the prior year, that is only the fifteen percent increase, and the discussion is that we just, that you earmark the additional A P A in your contingency account, um, and we'll talk about that when we get to contingency, and then, once that comes through, you can do it like you've done all the other positions when you had, the next discrepancy that, uh, the balance comes in.
So the new position is not.
It is not. This is like any, uh, case manager, or officer. That was David Ford's center. You talk about that number that was in contingency, Eddie? Uh, I'll tell you in a second, but now the case manager, the only thing asked for, for Katie, uh, was a new prosecutor at seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and the case manager's the D R C A. Oh, you got the one in the contingency account? Oh, yeah. That's Mark Prosecutor, she only asked for the assistant attorney.
Seventy-two thousand?
Seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars with benefits is ninety-six, seven, seventy-three, seventy-five. Uh, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars going along.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm in. Good. Uh, the assessor's office, um, remember the assessor, this is the general, general county account for the assessor, there's two is the evaluation fund on the other side, so this is the general county side. Um, it's a seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollar increase from last year that is only, um, the fifteen percent increase, so flat funded at a million, zero fifty-one, one forty-three.
It never happened in this system.
Chief.
Yeah. I know that he promoted him.
He never told it.
Yeah, he's got a position.
Yes, in contingency? No, that stays in the budget, that stays in the budget piece.
Have another assessor come in?
Yeah, so, right now, Mr. Barnhart, just to tell you, your, see what you're saying. Right? Right now, his salaries are trending at fifty-eight percent, but I believe back, was paid out four seven, I believe it was four six. So a million, oh, fifty-one, one forty-three to flat fund the assessor?
Good.
Okay.
Good.
Statewide computer network, this is the monies that we pay Charleston, actually, we pay some money to Charleston, and we play, we actually have a contract with Frontier to provide a communication line down there. Um, in many counties, the, the counties will ride a state contract price, but we negotiated that ourselves and cut, we're about seventy percent under what the state contract was, managing the local, so that number at one fifty would mean three hundred each if we did it ourselves. So it's, it's a mandatory expense. Sheriff's tax processing, this has no salaries, this is just the expenses of running the taxes and the publications and all of that stuff.
This is for the paper.
That's right, that's right. That's right. So as you recall, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, flat funded, um, there's some instances where the sheriff will come in, you know, if there's a heavy delay on the list, they come back and say, hey, we need more, but in this instance, proposing, uh, two twenty-two.
It'll get that money back.
That includes all the mailings and stuff.
But it does, Steve, that's exactly where it is.
Yes, sir.
That's great, Jim.
You get that money back.
Fiduciary, um, flat funded, um, it has a forty thousand dollar increase from last year, if you remember, you added a position down there. Um, so it was, what was it, two ninety-four, four thirty-nine, and it's going to three forty-seven, eighty-nine to include the fifteen percent increase and to fund the position that, that is there.
And also, that, that means the part-time.
It does. It does.
Did they lose one and just add a part-time?
They had one, they had one, they kind of had two people in one, so I had a apprentice, if you will, and it's all coming online, and the forty is the, Steve, his name, you know his name?
Keith Sevick.
Or Keith Sevick, yeah, yeah. But this fully funds them, uh, with all of the functional positions.
That's what the raises added.
That's exactly right. That's correct.
What did money well spend?
Ag agent, um, they requested some additional monies, Alan's proposing flat funding them, uh, it's a four thousand, fifty-four dollar increase from last year, and that's to cover the fifteen percent pay increase.
They asked for travel.
They asked for travel and some just general expenses, Mr. Barnhart.
You know how much that is?
I can tell you in a second. My boss has it covered.
Can you take it there?
So they wanted, um, they wanted to take their travel from two thousand, twenty-four dollars to three thousand, thirty-six dollars, and they wanted to take their material supplies up from two thousand, twenty-three dollars to three thousand, thirty-three dollars.
Did they increase the mileage rate?
That state did increase the mileage rate, they did, as well did you, uh, but the proposition with that number is to flat fund them to not do any of that, and only provide.
I don't, I don't exactly agree, what'd they ask for?
They asked for one twenty-four, six forty-four. So twenty, two thousand, twenty dollars, twenty dollars, two thousand, twenty-two dollars. Do you have a column, you're in, Sheriff? You wanna fund, you wanna fund them at total? You wanna fund them what they asked for?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, cause moving out of new facilities, there's some things they may need that they didn't account for.
Yeah.
That's the same number you had.
Yeah, hold on, let me, let me do this math. Hold on. You gotta get it right, so you wanna fund them as they were, so bear with me.
Where they were flat funded at was one twenty-two.
It was a thousand, ten.
You already had the higher number in there.
Yeah, I just typed the wrong one in. It's actually.
Because, it's because the paper's been slipped.
Go on, I'm sorry.
Paper says one twenty-four, six, sixty-four in the line total, and then it adds the four, and it goes back down to one twenty-two, six, forty-two. So it was like it was put in, but then not put in?
Maybe.
Not incorrect. See three, three lines in?
Yeah, so to fund them with the request is one twenty-four, six forty-four. Six sixty-four, two. One twenty-four, six, six, four.
Right. But when I papered, we have, they, they have that with their request.
Right.
But in the total, it does not.
Right. It's cause he backed that. So, that's right. So one twenty-four, six, six, four funds them as requested.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm good.
We'll get to heck with the deal.
Your office.
They are.
No, you're kidding me. No, they don't have that there.
I'm fine with it. Okay. You're fine with it, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. County clerk collections, um, this number includes the additional monies for the two new satellite early voting locations, um, as well.
Voting machine?
No, the voting machine is a bought, big lottery?
Yeah, I mean, we have enough.
We do, we just, we just spent ninety thousand dollars on additional ones that clerk Patricey asked for, that they're bought, paid for, actually, they're bought here, and I just signed the invoice this morning. Um, so you have the monies for the two new locations, plus the fifteen percent, other than that, it's flat funded, so it's seven eighty-five, four forty-seven.
That's true. Good. And then, that, that takes care of the, uh, tax, I mean, the voting registration office for the years, all those salaries, you know?
It does, it certainly.
And in the elections itself, do you have any clue, like, when we have the primary next this year, what's the, the actual election cost now? At one time, I know it was like eighty thousand dollars, I'm sure it's over a hundred thousand.
Yes, sir. Are you talking about material and time?
Yes, the district holding election, is what I was saying.
Now, we could get it.
I'm just curious, because I know, at one time, people are thinking about, well, what you can't do anymore in excess levy when it's a, a special excess levy, like the school board used to do. It used to cost eighty thousand dollars to do it, now it's probably, I don't know, what it'd be, a hundred?
Two hundred fifty. There, there, there are three levels of, of course, you can't do special elections anymore, but I'd still like to know the answers, what does that election cost us to put on? We can't, so there are three pieces to that pie, there's, there's the people time, there's the technical time from, used to be papers, that's printing, now you have tech, now you have, now you have the, the election presented to you electronically. Right. It's not cheap, and then there's a third piece to that, which is the equivalent that you use, and we're doing that, so yes, we can provide that, I don't have it, but we can get it.
I don't need it today, I mean, just, just, I'm just interested, the, sure. Somebody said, well, by the way, Steve, how much does that election cost us to get it put on?
Sure.
That includes poll work?
It does include poll work, their contractual, their contractual.
It went from two hundred to three hundred.
Yeah, it went, and just so you know, uh, Mr. Barnhart, on your contractual piece to that, that's a hundred, it's going from a hundred thousand, a hundred ninety thousand dollars.
I just pulled a bunch of data for, um, Tom over at the voter registration office and the supervisor over there, in order to find out how much you can spend for, or, um, for the one, not with the, um, machines or outside of that scope, and it didn't take me long, so I could certainly pull that data through.
Yeah. Okay. Um, remember the magic seventy-five thousand dollars that we had over on the revenue side? Here's where it goes away.
All right. Well, good, after we do the.
You're right, yeah, you're talking about a good deal, um, you get thirty million dollars worth of space for seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, circuit courts.
How would we go about trying to get that to your house?
They've been working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of negotiate, script pretty clear.
Yeah. Supreme Court.
Supreme Court.
H D is not the state, but that's just a Supreme Court, right? It is, that's all that's in there.
Is that, oh, okay, well, I thought it was magistrate.
Well, that is Supreme Court, they're under the umbrella of Supreme Court.
Oh, so Supreme Court manages all of that?
They do. Magistrate, so family, uh, circuit, probation. So if you have any questions, call my name. Um, court security, uh, this is Chief Lang and the team that provides you all of the wonderful services they have, um, this is flat funded, there's four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, of your fifteen percent increases that involved there, so, now you did include the, the trip program. Yeah. That's part of the challenge.
Is there an estimate, how much I listed building? For the actual security?
I'd say in the next.
Is there an estimated cost per building? Say, security?
We only.
Courthouse, you know how they have metal detectors and all that for somebody getting a building?
So that judicial center, court security, that number is that building only?
Well, this includes transportation.
Well.
If you were to put security in this building, you have an estimated cost?
Well, you figure probably at least four people.
Right.
Uh, so, here, here's the issue with building security, one means of ingress, one means of ingress, one means of egress, so if you're going to do security, have to shut down and funnel every, if you've been to Canal County, you go there, there, the difference is between them and us and some others, is we don't have any court services here, so courts, we don't provide, we don't provide any security, we don't provide security.
Right.
I mean, court security officers, probably, it's, it's, or just calling, say, five thousand a day, you do that by four, plus equipment, if it was just, if it was just a one hundred a month for you, you're probably, you're probably about a thousand dollars, but again, this building, you're going to do five hundred entrances, uh, when we hand it in, it's, uh, hard, so, doesn't need to be present. So, I'd say that you never design or do a design, you do it, it's, it's a, it's a shit that everything, it's like number, I would say, at a minimum, three hundred.
All right, good.
So is everyone okay with the million nine?
Yes.
Custodial, uh, this is, um, maintenance, as well as cleaning, so all of Jack Lang's team, uh, the cleaning folks that Mike Lang manages, and everything necessary to perform those duties, a little bit of material supplies and stuff like that, it's not great, um.
Some of that material supplies comes out of different budgets.
Comes out of courthouse accountant, um, but if, actual physical pieces, if they need a new rider, they need a drill, that kind of stuff, the actual materials and supplies for our efforts, all the, uh, so fifty-seven, two forty-nine is the increase to get? You know, questions, your concerns, comments?
And you had said that, that includes like senior center?
That, this includes the labor, if you have to work at the senior, does including material, all of that's in the courthouse accountant.
Do we move the grass a lot?
We do not.
Who does that?
They don't.
They, they, they. They may, then, if they're available, they are community service.
They may.
So, so as a county, do we have them?
We, we use community service to do that, Steve, Steve Boback, that worked for the court martial, he's actually in the court martial effort, um, he does that, um, it, we don't have a lot of that.
Well, I know, most of it's, it's around that.
Right, now, we have contractual obligations for mowing the Scorching Paradise.
Like side waterway.
Like side waterway, we don't do that ourselves, we have that contract, and though that contract obligation be out of courthouse accountant, be out of Florida?
I didn't know that was part of the, no, sure.
Civil service, um, this is the county clerk budget that deals with supporting the civil service commission, uh, it gets reduced, it was at fifteen, um, their salaries, there is no, this is just when they need, uh, legal application, legal help, applications and stuff like that.
Tending to reduce that a little bit.
They did, they did, so.
Question for Steve, the park from rec, you all do all the girls coming in house?
We did, but this past year was the first time they've done it.
Cause in two years, we gotta think about being that far. I've asked, I was, I was, I told you, it's very far.
Could be the way it ends for the move.
Of course, the, the first, the person they hired this year, it's the first time they did it, he way under bed, so I'm sure he's gonna go substantially next year, but he way under bed and, uh, he got crucified, but.
Wouldn't be cheap to do that.
But we always thought so, and that's, we, we didn't have any choice but to do it in house, but we couldn't afford it.
Depends on what kind of boers you're starting to look at.
If you've got to afford to do it, it's wonderful, if you can afford to do it, but, but they're setting on, they're setting on million dollars worth of inventory over there to mow grass, and, I mean, he, he always did a couple of activities, we couldn't afford it, but if you can kind of pay to do it, it's, it's no question where you go.
Maintenance alone. Yeah. Okay, your, um, your next budget is the courthouse accountant, so this is the catch-all for you, for your property casualty, uh, gasoline, building repair, building maintenance, anything that happens here that is facility relative, um, this is where you need it, so as you see, gas trending up or down, uh, like I said, insurance, anything like that, it all happens here, so, uh, the proposed is three million, seven fifty-six?
You think it's a million?
I do think it's a million. I do, I, I think, I mean, gas is trending down, gasoline is trending down right now, uh, our utilities, you've, as you well know, uh, we're in the, we're in a ten million dollar project right now to retrofit H B C and the judicial center, we're in a complete lighting retrofit, just, is it, just for purposes of knowledge, we, the, the vendor has installed the lights, when I'm done, they physically installed the new LEDs at the new L C A, the sheriff's, at the sheriff's department, the new LEDs, we've installed them at a hundred percent. At the shares department, the new LEDs, we've installed them at a hundred percent, we're running at twenty-six percent. So, we went from fluorescent, so incandescent, to LED, which you know are fractional, and then we took that LED and dialed it clear down to twenty-six percent and it's getting good. So, I think you're gonna see electric really dip. When we get through the judicial center, some of those bulbs in there just chew energy. And they'll be tied into the controls so the days of leaving lights on and off, go away with the computer, no, wait a minute, HVAC just turned off, the lights on, just shut them off. So, you're gonna see significant change.
I was sitting in the doctor's office about three, and the lights went out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I waved and came back. Tells you how long you'll work for the day, doctor.
Dan Hall wants to hear if you also, um, some partner, he's, he's representing his solar, uh, replacement. As it comes to energy costs, there is the guy.
Sure. Any questions or concern on three million, seven fifty-six for the courthouse account?
Say it's a million.
I agree.
It's a million. Other buildings, this is your debt service. Uh, as you'll see, the, the, it's increased by a million, two. Uh, that is to service your last two loans. That's correct?
Five million.
Five and ten. Uh, you had, you had ten that you sold previously for David's center, and then most recently, five was just executed to pay yourself back for, you know, you needed. And residual after this bill.
Twenty twenty-seven, they retire a lot of that.
You do retire a significant amount of that debt service, the older debt service. Alan, I'll go back again, but the, the council in Allen, where you're refinancing and that stuff, shorter term, less in the rate. I mean, that was, I believe that was in twenty-five, twenty thirty-five.
I don't give credit to them.
It will, absolutely, positively, but you've worked hard over the last decade to do that, so twenty twenty-seven is a, is a milestone for this body. So, to satisfy your current debt, four million, five thirty-five.
Okay.
Yep. Glad Coop was not here, cause he'd already been talking. Um, IT?
Yeah, question is IP.
No, thank you, Steve. Way to pick up where he left off. So, flat funded, as requested, I, I said in my budget presentation that my particular field of choice in today's, in today's market only gets expensive. We have not been flat funded. The county council has always been focused on staying current, staying efficient, staying effective. This is a flat fund request. I believe the next fiscal year, we'll need to ask for some changes because some of the things we do have.
I think people have.
Seventeen.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Is that enough?
For now? Yes, sir. Um, it's funny, in two thousand and seven, it was me.
Yeah.
Um, and then as we grew, as we grew, the responsibility of that department isn't what I did in two thousand and seven, right? As we've grown, we've supported outside agencies, we've eliminated certain contracts, we at least haven't done contractually. So, it's kind of a, just a migrated effort to get where it is today, but it.
So, you've added about one person a year, so you still.
That's exactly right. We sure have. And justify that by cost saving. So, even though the two point nine six three two one seven, I don't think that's proportionate to the increase we would have produced elsewhere. Or people like Councilperson Coop and Heather and others would have looked at me and said, you're growing, and we're not, and just changing the model. So, instead of contractually doing it, we're gonna get it out.
Does that include supplies?
It includes, that includes every copier, every copier maintenance.
Cell phone, your telephone, you know.
I, I would almost bet Gary that, that two point nine six would be double if we didn't have the IT support.
Guarantee that. I can guarantee you that.
You guys, you guys are paying for yourself something like the contractor and the work that you go up north and count.
We do, we do. So, we generated about seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue last year. Uh, we support market. So, you can't talk to an outside agency that we don't support. And to that point, HD, the, this council needs to remember that you in kind, all of those people free, hosted telephone service and many of the internet services. So, every fire department, every ambulance station, parks and recreation, development authority, landmarks, C B B, health department in two counties, um, all of them, you in kind, they pay for the service, uh, but you in kind, in, in some instances, and Mr. Catholic can speak to it. I think we eliminated seven hundred thousand dollars with recurring monthly, or seven hundred dollars worth of recurring monthly expenses.
Just in their, uh, just in phones alone, it's a thousand more.
We eliminated that. Now, we didn't assume that cost the way we worked, as big as we are, we could just assume them and provide it.
So, who's the carrier of content?
No, no, we, our shift structure provided by a company called Sacra, uh, out of areas in the world.
And this also includes our alert system throughout county, uh, which currently with R A E.
R A E technology.
Uh, and that's probably around twenty five thousand.
Just one up a little, like twenty-six, seven.
But also, I know that Gary and your department has supplied a substantial amount of assistance to the one percent, used to buy vampire.
Vampire, we do.
So, I, I know that, um, Chief Switwood is always very complimentary, um, of the services that, that your agency gives.
Yeah, we support their dispatch and all of that. So, I'm confident in the number. I'm confident that it's not a heavy number. Uh, but, you know, just, you hear cybersecurity and things like that, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars just in that loan.
So, do these pay, people pay to us and we pay Sacra or Sacra?
So, for the communications, when we assume, like, when we assume parks and recreation, all we really do is port their D I D, their direct end dial numbers. It might cost us five dollars a month for his five numbers. You in, I don't bill them for it, you in kind of do it. So, when we assume all of these phone responsibilities, it might have cost you a thousand dollars a year. Cost everybody. We just in kind of, we don't bill them for it. They buy the phones and we bill them for long distance. If they use it, the long distance is like two cents a minute. That's what you want.
Maybe the same time we talk about, we can talk about.
Are you familiar with the roundhouse situation with Sacra? Only on the alarm line, only on the alarm line. I can help. I tried to help before, but we should talk. We provide phone service and internet networks too, but the phone line thing, we should talk offline.
So, I have a question on your budget here.
Sure.
So, the twenty-two million, nine sixty-three, that includes everything, but when you build those people, other agencies for you to work, it goes into the revenue side of the county, so it doesn't come back to IT.
It does come back. Alan puts it, yes, it does. It comes back in and we use that to do other things. So, you could, you could, so you, go ahead, Steve.
No, I, I'm just.
So, yes, two point nine six three two one seven is the budget, but there'll be another, let's just say this year, another seven hundred thousand added to that. I would generate the revenue, and it comes in, Alan will put it right back in IT and it'll go up. Doesn't pay salaries. That's how we buy, like, materials and supplies, contract services, dues and subscriptions, that all gets inflated by the revenue generated.
Yeah, I'm saying that amount, that seven hundred something is not included.
That is correct.
In addition to the twenty-nine.
That is correct.
I mean, the two million nine.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And to justify that, some of the staff wouldn't be needed if I didn't, if we didn't do that.
Right. The seventeen that most you've ever had.
Oh, yeah.
It's simply to figure me out that twenty-one people.
I did? We had, we, so we do, we had a big project going on with the city department, we had some jack work for them. Uh, and I had three, I had three contract labor. They weren't ever employees. They were contract labors.
Like Marty Key's every time.
Yeah, that's right. And that works out really good. So, they use our equipment, our management, I would get them at this rate and then work up, we'll get for the delivery, so cover our costs.
So, the seventeen are on there, payroll.
Yes, sir.
Benefits and everything.
Yes, sir.
That's the max.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Does that include you?
I might be eighteen. I, I might be eighteen. I can, but it's included. My salaries.
All right. I'm doing my IT work. Thank you.
Yeah. Let's get excited when I make it, we'll know the year.
Been closer.
Thank you. Um, region nine, um, this.
What they asked for?
The region nine is exactly what they asked for, I believe.
It's a lot of that.
It's formula calculating.
It is formula calculating. Yeah, and that, that is it. I know it is. I looked at it the other day. I get it fooled just to make sure. It was, they asked for a million, three ninety-five.
Maybe a hundred thousand.
Yeah, excuse me, hundred thousand, three ninety-five dollars, sorry. Any question or concerns with their request?
And that is the lowest funded region of the state of West Virginia.
So, Rachel says.
Yes, sir.
And to.
She is doing wonderful things in increasing size of region nine, so, and it may go up next year.
I think she mentioned that in her budget table there, she is. Moving on to Main Street, Martinsburg, as we delve into the outside agencies, um, their request was, what was their exact request?
Eighty-two, eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
What's that they asked for?
Yep.
Hey, I'm, what are you spending on?
What we explained when he came in was, they had this big event they wanted to do.
It must be.
Yeah, like, like a major concert, but they wanted to put it on. Then he said they not wanna do it this year, but it still falls within the fiscal year. But what we discussed in our meeting on Saturday sort of was that if they come upon that and actually put the plans together, we'll let them come back and ask for that one then, instead of just giving it to them now and having it float around and do what they want with.
Sure, put a contingency earmark.
Con, combo, yeah, well.
I wouldn't do that.
A little, no, no, not, not particularly.
They may not even come back and ask.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but Robbie, Robbie explained that that's why he didn't take it out of his request, is because they had agreed not to do it this summer.
Well, what do you think?
But it still falls within the fiscal year. But like, like what I said, if and when you get it planned and you have an amount we need.
Of course.
You know, and then we'll see if it's something we think is relevant to make us, you know, hotel money and bring enough people to the area.
Well, where do you think they should be allocated about that? Alan's proposing twenty-five thousand.
Out of, uh.
Whole severance?
Whole severance, yeah. I, I, I'd like to see it stay there.
Yeah.
You want it not to.
It's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars out of whole severance?
Yep.
Jim, Eddie, is that a?
Yeah, it's, it's near eighty-five.
Twenty-five thousand out of whole severance.
Yeah, because, because he, he had sat there in, in, for presentation, said they weren't gonna do the event this year, but then I called him later, like, well, why didn't you drop your numbers? And he was like, well, it still falls within the fiscal year if we do it next year. But like I said, we revisit that.
Yeah.
If they have something that's worth us investing in.
Um, the next request is from the airport. Um, we all know her next presentation, um, he's asking for, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think. Is that what the request was?
Two fifty.
Is it two fifty? Okay, okay.
There's twenty-five less than the last.
And what I think, Jim?
Uh, I, I'm okay with the two fifty, but I wanna put, uh, some contingency point. I have a comment, it's gonna be, uh, the old event.
So, you, you wanna fund him at two fifty and you wanna get to contingency, we're talking about something else?
Yeah.
All right, yeah. Anyone else?
I'm here.
Yeah, I'm good.
He's, he's doing great things.
Yes, he is. The next point is building inspections. I can honestly tell you that Brian Ross runs that thing.
Yeah, Brian does a wonderful job.
He does. Uh, so, uh, that is with the increases, uh, eight twenty, three seventy-one.
Is there any indication that he needs more people here?
He did not ask, and he says no.
Okay. No problem.
Good, good. Yes. The same with planning and, planning and zoning. I can yet again promise you that those values are probably as streamlined as possible. To include, it's a flat fund only to include the cost for fifteen percent of that.
Yeah. Eddie?
Yeah. Engineering, same instance, uh.
What's the deal with the, um, what are you talking about, the engineer training? They have a new one yet, so.
That, that field in and of itself is tricky to facilitate, so as, as it stands now, um, it's just gonna hold you back.
This is my only question on the engineering. Why is the difference so low? Was it just not that many salaries that are going to be charged?
Yeah, that's correct.
Three forty-five, you got a thirty-six percent, maybe, uh, six thousand increase, and at six nine, you only got fourteen and a half thousand increase.
Yeah, I don't have, you have to work.
It, but then it seemed, seemed odd to me that it's so, uh, that, uh, fifteen percent.
Very exact. Get a correct seat. It is in there on engineering, uh, salaries are, um, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of the whole thing, Steve.
Is it just two salaries?
In engineering? No, it's, it's six hundred and six, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Six seventy-two, four twenty.
As a personnel.
Yep.
But I just don't understand, what other difference would be so low?
I don't know. I didn't.
Did you talk about with the raises?
Yeah, yeah. I tell you what, I'll check, Steve, just to confirm, just to make sure you don't have calculation mistakes.
Weird to me that's that, uh, the difference.
I'll check.
Yeah, if that, there's that many in salaries, fifteen percent is six hundred and seventy thousand, a whole lot more than fourteen and a half thousand.
I'll, I'll make sure there's no mistake there. I'll check, I'll make sure. I didn't do those, like I said, but, yeah.
Yeah, it was almost. Thirty forty-five, yeah, thirty-six.
I'll check them.
I mean, it should be up close to a hundred thousand dollars in difference.
I'll make sure.
Before that next meeting.
I'll make sure. If it's okay, we can just skip contingencies since it's the last piece and come back and deal with it later. Um, law enforcement?
Oh, yeah.
Um. Law enforcement, um, as you know, the sheriff asked for fourth positions, um, as well as a modification in overtime. Um, the proposed six million, six eighty-one, three forty includes, uh, moving the overtime to three hundred and ninety-six thousand. So, it's, um, it's a total increase of seven forty-one, three seventy-nine with the fifteen percent in that number for six million, six eighty-one, three forty.
And we're gonna work to get his holiday pay pulled out of the overtime.
Yep, yep.
So, he can separate that.
And remember the number we talked about this morning, with the, the quantity on the date?
Yeah.
With the number you heard is what the statistics say it has.
You got no way.
It's what we said.
That's, that's gotta stop. This amount doesn't include the new positions, so.
It does not. It does not. This number does not.
It keeps the staff at the level it is.
Correct.
And it includes fifteen percent.
That's correct, right?
Yeah, they got basically a new position helping travel.
Like, as they look at it, you got four, you, you, you've hired four new officers to do the travels, so.
Plus, he still has one in contingencies, a position that he hasn't filled.
That is absolutely correct.
Just because.
Uh, there's one in contingency right now for him on a fiscal year.
Three other positions he has.
Well, they got a few that aren't filled.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. So, right now, the, the, the department has sixty-six uniformed positions with one in contingency. That's not, I'm not speaking to how many vacancies he has, but he has sixty-six on salary, on payroll for you, sixty-six and one in contingency.
Yeah.
You guys?
Well, that, but they're mean ones that.
It's okay. So, six million, six eighty-one, three forty. Questions, comments, concerns?
It's a chunk.
It's, it's what, some seventeen percent of the whole pack?
Mm-hmm.
Like he frigging's a chunk. Let's go. Okay. And know that Cherry and myself will continue to press and, and kind of help work with them to get those two separated. So the start of the fiscal year, there will be an overtime and a holiday pay. Service of process, that's where all the non-uniform, non-sworn officers are, all the administrative staff. Uh, historically, the definition of this is, this account is like process serving. But if you remember a few years ago, to separate the compensation skills, we have the sworn officers here and all the administrative folks are here. That's what that number is, and it's flat funded, only including fifteen percent increase.
Here.
Matt?
Good.
Take a break. Take a break. So the service of process is, that's non-sworn personnel, so all the administrative staff.
Okay.
Um, everybody that's not, not sworn, sworn.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The definition of, of process is the service of paperwork stuff like we talked about. But the purpose is keeping the budget clean and when you look at, because their, their retirement is different, their holiday skills are different, the way you have to pay them. That's why, and that was Alan's vision, to separate those two and have them easier to speak to when it comes to looking compensation and making adjustments. We have to calculate a completely different system. Their, their retirement's a different amount, their leave accumulation is a different amount. Even on holidays, if they're paying, whether they're working off on holidays, it's better to separate them from the rest of them, so.
No.
It was like two years ago, year ago, they made changes. It's not been on that long, but those, that was a job.
Yeah, let's, um.
Want to take a break, Rick?
Yeah, that's just some extra time here for a second. We'll take a break until Jim gets back.
The next topic for funding is the regional jail bill. As you can see, it is currently being asked to fund at 3.5, which is actually 3.325. So we've dropped it down to 3.25. You know there's some legislation out there that could affect that. This is directly related to and kept where it is with your day report center, your home confinement options and the community service options. So while you, that number could easily be 7 million. You held it steady and brought it down to some extent a little bit over the years.
What's it running at?
Right now, it is at...
It's on pace for 2.5 million again.
Can I tell you where it is today, Mr.?
Yeah, 2122, we were at 2.8.
One, where is it? 46.9% right now. So you're trending under. So if there is no issue of funding, it's 3 billion, 25 million.
Yeah, I think Steve stated, I don't know exactly what's going to happen with that per diem. That calculation hopefully would save us about 200,000, according to some of the jail bill calculation that was proposed.
You want to leave it at 3.5? You want to take it down to 3.25? See where Alan?
No, I'm comfortable with his number.
Right. So did they ask for 3.5 or did he put it at 3.2?
There's no ask, nobody asked.
This is projection, that's right.
Yeah, and when I tell you Alan lives and breathes, he lives and breathes every day. I mean, this year and last year, it's going to come in at about 2.5. And with the extra correction, I mean, home confinement officers who retired, with the projection to hire another next year, it's going to stay 2.5.
Home confinement, speaking of them, if you'll recall, you added two home confinement officers approved in January. So to flat fund, to properly fund, which is a flat fund request including the 15%, there's 202,524 dollars above last year. So the total funding needed is 693,727. That is include those two, Steve, as you just mentioned. It does not include it, but it does not. We'll discuss that in the contingency.
Good.
How's, how's the transfer going?
Yeah, they, they are getting, moving back city.
Um.
Brian.
Same thing as before.
Yeah, he does a lot of stuff very much.
Deputy reserves, flat funded from last year. As you well know, this is to help them with anything they need for expenses. They, they do fundraising and have their own budget and stuff like that. This is a piece out of your general county money. I can remember this being as much as 25,000.
What about your calling?
So right now, you are outfitting them with six 2018 Ford Eco Sports to Houston Engineering. So we'll retire, we'll retire six.
Ground fix.
Ground fix coming very, very soon. They're getting strike right now. So their 2018s with about anywhere between 60 and 80,000 miles on them. So they're like brand new compared to what they're driving. They're driving 25,000. It'll help them out. Any concern with the 5,000 for them?
Probably 25,000.
It always gives more.
It's, it's been as low as 2,500.
It has.
Yeah.
It has. I mean, if you remember, there was a particular sheriff that didn't have any.
Didn't do nothing.
Correct. Emergency services, this is homeland security, emergency management, paid firefighters and everything in between. The, the 2,418,970, flat funds then to include all of the salary increases and staffing they have to date. That does not include anything new. Yeah, yeah, because there's a contingency line up above them to adjust a couple of other issues. But there's some capital outlay.
Yeah, they're talking about, yeah, we do uniform, not uniform, but hazmat suits.
Yeah, that's, that should be in their capital outlay right there. That 292 along with the salary change. But definitely those dry suits are needed. Their hazmat suits are in pretty good shape. But there was some other equipment that needs, new rope, probably some new rope that's allocated that need to be replaced. Is this the?
Look, you and I talked about it for redesignation of her title.
No, that's not in there.
Not in, okay.
This is, and their capital outlay is actually reduced by 10,000 from last year. This is, the, the increase in this is just salaries.
And this is just for the?
Just for firefighter. Your emergency manager.
Pay firefighter.
Paid firefighters, emergency manager, the staff, and then Randy Liddy, the director of one, what this is. And part-time firefighters, all of that's in there.
Anything relative to firefighters?
Nothing with the ambulance authority.
No, sir, no, sir. That is correct. And we'll talk about the requests in the contingency light item for some salary changes.
So the grand, all right, other than the chief and the firefighters, paid firefighters, Randy, how do they understand?
You have Randy, you have Sean, the emergency manager, you have the admin, and then you have the fire, the fire chief.
Right.
And 20, how many firefighters? 21 firefighters and then the part-timers. So salary, salary for that alone, Steve, is 2,321,370. 2,321,370.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah. Any questions or concern funding it as is? Communication center, as most of you know, and Steve and HD, your 911 center exists wholly and solely on the 911 fee. And that 911 fee is specific on what the expenses can be due for down there. 911 is asked to do some services and functions that is not necessarily covered under the 911 fee, particularly administrative work for the sheriff's department, administrative work for the day report center, prosecuting attorney and home confinement. So what the council does is contribute that money to the running of 911. So if the auditor or anyone ever were to say, hey, you're doing these administrative services, that's outside the scope of what the people cover. This is how, this is how you protect it.
All the full year requests and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
And all the calls transferred from the sheriff's department off of.
Administrative, non-911 calls.
That's correct.
When they do criminal histories and background checks for the prosecutor's office and things like that, those aren't necessarily covered under the emergency piece. So you fund them outside that scope.
That's me.
That's me. Animal control, that number is.
Your job then, Gary.
What's that?
You control the animals in here.
No, you guys are fine. 372,600 is flat funded to include only the 15% increases.
I just have God put it in the wrong then, that was new animal control officer. Yeah, I just don't take care of animals. I used to be a buster. I went to vet care. There's animals, now I'm taking care of the furry animals. Nobody said that.
I think it's six.
Six.
Hey, Jerry, can you know that payroll, how big is it?
That's okay, I've got it here.
Bobby, Kevin, it.
Yeah. One, yeah, I think it's six. So, and that's flat funded, there's no additional requests there.
Does it include some kind of, like, dog and kennel?
It does. Their, their, their account is, so they have.
13,000 in operations.
Yeah, it's not a lot. 8,130 and then commodities about 5,600, Jim. So they have materials and supplies. Their contract budget is still small for the professional services too. They only put 2,000 in there. Remember, they deal with utilization costs and stuff like that. So they run pretty lean.
That is a.
They have some dog and kennel fund.
They do, use it too.
Kevin and them, they've been doing a pretty good job here.
Next to nothing.
Next to nothing, yeah. And maybe the, the adoption rate is up, so that's even better.
That includes the city of Lawrence.
Yes, it does.
Any questions or concern animal control?
They have fun that too, the city of Lawrence.
Bill them, there's a billing model that we bill them for, how much?
Do you remember that? It just seemed to me like they had enough, but they, the city budget too.
Oh, it would be to pay animal control, that would come down. We do it for them.
Would that come to us and then we put it into this, was it additional to this?
It would, probably goes into dog and kennel. Probably bill them and come in there. It doesn't go directly in here. It could end directly.
Central garage, that number is reflective of the full-time mechanic that we hired July 1, plus the 15, but there's only two employees in there. So the increase is 63,752. That again is the full-time certified mechanic and the 15% increase for the staff there. And that has paid dividends and rewards. So we, we are, we've serviced, we've now started servicing parks and recreation vehicles for them. And in our shop, we're servicing senior services vehicles for them now. And we've done some servicing on Morton County.
What was, what was the roundabout figure we will pan, we should pan out transit authorities for their services?
Oh, probably about 65.
Gary, when we, you, we have, we have a tow, is that included in this enough? Anything if they break down or something, they have a wreck to share.
That's us.
All it includes all the tow.
100%. 100%. So 360, 343,622.
Yep.
So now we're into some outside agency stuff here. You'll notice a highlighted yellow, that's, that's just Alan saying for the purposes of funding these, whatever amount you choose, he's proposing we fund them out of course that. Eastern Panhandle Conservation District, they asked for five.
What's your pleasure? I wanted to give them five also.
Yeah.
And keep it out of state.
Cold Sevres. Yeah, keep it out of Cold Sevres. It's unanimous five for Conservation District.
Let's hopefully pay back the three main tax credits for the barrels and try to get them to massage that into there.
Okay, there, good work. Safe Haven.
That's Casa?
No.
No.
Child Addicts.
Child Addicts.
Yeah. Yeah, so they asked for five, right? And I'm good with that five alcohol service myself. That's really good.
And then it was five for everyone? Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're back to the day report center. This is your staff, not an outside agency. As it stands here, that's, let's see, that includes your home confinement office and your trip, your travel focus that you added and the 15% increase. And then flat funded everywhere else. And remember, a huge portion of it comes back to that, it's grant funding. So even though you see, you know, a big number.
Big funding was on the positive side?
On the opposite. That's correct.
I'm confused.
Yeah, hold on there, Gary.
Sure.
That's in a completely different trip people. Because it's down in another line.
Oh, it's under the, I'm sorry, I misspoke, you're right, I'm sorry.
It's under mental health.
That's exactly right, I'm very sorry. That's correct. But this includes the other staff additions that Tim has that are on grants. That's the big increase. There's, there isn't any request for people that haven't been covered by a grant. I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Should look at it. Right, it still seems like a large increase there.
All right, I'll tell you, Steve.
Because the personnel on that was, tell you a second. Was 2,725,000 and 15% of that is, should, should only be like 400 some thousand dollars and not 700.
I'm sure it's standard.
I guess if you raise out, there's also increases changes. Some of these benefits as well. Still seems to all hold up.
So the salaries went from 2,800,000 to 2,725,000. I don't have documentation. Eddie, Jim?
2,800,000.
Went from 2,800,000 to 2.7 million.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, oh, you're okay. In your, that's the therapist and stuff that you guys have added through the current fiscal year. What did you?
Medicaid.
That's what that is. Steve, you're right, it's, it's adding staff, but it's staff already added. You're not adding staff post this budget. That's staff that's been added from July 1.
Very nice curve.
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah, you're not adding staff. Now, Tim asked for a case manager, but we're going to talk about that. That's right. So in many of these, this particular department, I don't even know how many.
There are two Medicaid, because they, they started a new Medicaid, Medicaid certified. They have two Medicaid.
It's a bunch.
Special, I guess they're called.
There's, there's two therapists.
Yeah, and they have a, they have two Medicaid billing specialists that they have to add as well.
And then two home confinement officers, right.
They come out of that too, of the BRC.
Two home confinement officers.
Yeah.
This all, those are all people, Steve, that have been added post-July 1, 2022. And there's, and there's nothing in here to show the return on that investment. It's huge.
Well, the Medicaid they have already gotten, when did that start?
That started.
September, December, I guess they got them. They've already made 95,000 dollars.
Two months.
A couple of months, yes.
Two months.
95,000 dollars.
Since we got the designation.
For Medicaid.
And then that goes into that designation.
Yes, that would be a.
It wouldn't count the confinement officers, that's a separate.
No, I misspoke, you're right, it does count the confinement.
But the, and all those positions they're at are all getting paid through by grants anyway, so.
A good point, not all of them.
Most of them, yes, most of them. And they look to get Medicaid payments, what they said, a million dollars at least a year of back in Medicaid payments for those people.
Yeah, when Tim, when Tim presented to the council and discussed that with you, that's almost a loss predict. It's almost, it's almost the revenues become back next time.
Right.
Sorry, Steve, I missedpoke there. I missed this book of property.
You're booked there.
So 3,423,006 to fund it as it stands today is okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Now we're back into outside agencies. Community alternatives to violence, they asked for 15. Yes, sir.
They're getting five.
Alan, well, Alan's proposing five from Cold Sevres.
But I'd like to see a double, if not triple, but I'd like to at least get a 10. They're asking for 15?
Yes, sir.
Also the difference with you 10.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
HD?
Yeah.
10, 10, 10,000 from Cold Sevres. Eastern Panhandle Empowerment Center.
Maybe forty-ten.
They asked for forty-seven thousand. Uh, Alan, Alan again recommending coast severance, but at twenty-five hundred.
Refreshes on their purpose with the.
I think they changed the name.
Yeah.
Did you say Jim, like, what? Called something else, I lost it.
Yeah, they changed the name, I think, because they are, they're saying things that they're talking.
So they weren't, they weren't aligned out of this last one year.
Yeah, they didn't ask women.
Well, this is. This is the one across street. Are they the ones that do the Goodwill stuff?
They have an office across. They have a, they have an office over at Bayport Martin's, but the facility is up on.
Then we're gonna have to move to a new facility, that's why they were asking.
I want them to stay.
No, they moved to a new facility, I don't remember. Cause that, that old house is outdated and run down and she said they were.
They're bad.
You don't have it?
Nope. Nothing.
Yeah, if, if the council wants to discuss it, I don't have it.
Yeah.
You want me to go over it?
Yeah, can I come over with you?
I don't have it.
It's hard.
Should buzz me in, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, shoot.
If not, climb over. That little hole.
I'm sorry to be such a pain, but that was.
That's what this is for.
Don't be sorry.
This is your opportunity.
Yeah, I, I gave them a free.
Yeah, I've got a sweep for Tim, but it's.
Yeah, I don't know why she, she. Can you tell you what community of, not, what's it called, um?
Empowerment.
Empowerment, what was that, what that used to be? Empowerment, is that what it used to be? I know it's not Empowerment.
What do we fund the lives to?
Nothing.
Is it who's saying?
Is that what that's called? Maybe it was, Steve, you can turn it upside down. Twenty-two, twenty-three, you're right.
I think it was.
Do you remember what day it came in?
Yeah, okay. I can go through my, I'm looking up the playoff schedule, if there's anything out of it, kind of the scheduling. Tracy's looking it up for me.
Yeah, there's two, couple of guys up there.
Which one are we looking at, so looking at?
Power.
They were here on, they were three-thirty on the ninth, HD.
The ninth?
Yes, sir. Katie Spree's presented.
He has Casa.
Dog's schedule.
I don't want Casa.
They're after Casa, there's a next budget presentation, HD.
Empowerment?
Yep.
He has Katie Spree, two thirty-six West Martin, yeah, that's, that's. That's the one.
Need a full-time role person for the court system.
Oh, it's a child advocate, is that my?
Yeah, fill a role in the magistrate court system, Berkeley County Courthouse to advocate, available in magistrate's one hundred years. Medicaid space, sorry, for the.
That's, that's Safe Haven, Children's Safe Haven. Yeah, but they want them to stay up. She's the one that brought in, um, magistrate.
Right.
Feel the dangers of Amber Bank on County Community of Blues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with the twenty-five, five, coast severance.
Maybe serve on Children's Home Society of West Virginia, Safe Haven, that's who it was. It checked the name.
So twenty-five coming from coast severance, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Health Department, uh, requested a hundred?
Yeah, budget of a hundred.
Everybody consensus to fund them at a hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, mental hygiene transports, here you go. We spoke about the magical four people, um. This is the two thousand, two hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty is the outfit of your new quote-unquote transport division. Um, so to fund it as you've already presented and awarded three seventy-five, nine twenty.
Correct.
Yep.
Good.
Good.
That's already pretty good.
Just getting warmed up. Uh, recovery services, um, funded as is, um. And actually, that increase of forty-nine, five thirty-four, you had to have had the, the human in there. And recovery services, you guys add in this current fiscal, that's not just fifteen percent.
Maybe add some more, do you have any kind of?
Well, let's go over at the, um, old.
Yep, the old health department. Yes, sir.
There are.
See, that's, that's to cover new, our current position, there's no, there's no increases in people like that.
That's just, that's just eight oh two?
Pardon?
That's just eight oh two?
That is just recovery service, that's your resource area. I don't know where Tim puts people, if it's just there, but that's that.
Yeah, I was wanting some recovery services, fall into the DRC too.
Right.
Cause he's got recovery services everywhere.
He does, he does. But that's your current, that's your, to fund current stuff, that's not adding anybody. The only request provision is the one we're gonna talk about in contingency.
Grants.
Cover that. Grants cover a good chunk of that.
Oh, yes, yeah. Once a disempoweries are made by grant funds.
Well, I'm great, money.
Steve, HD, Eddie, any questions or concerns?
No, I'm doing it. When do they fund their supplies?
Out of there, that's all out of there.
Six hundred.
Uh, mhm, so I remember he has the data reports.
I never.
Yeah. Solid Waste Authority is split up into two pieces, recycling and litter control. The first one is recycling?
Is this what he asked for?
So he asked for one seventy-five, one twenty-five.
Alright, that's what he asked for, that's what I know. You got one ounce?
He's, oh, here's the thing, that, that, he needs one seventy-five contingent upon. If he doesn't get that place for your tenant again, then I talked to some people just last night about that. There's a good chance they may get that lease.
Yeah, but. So it's suggesting we kind of say is, give him the sixty-three that Alan suggested, but if they don't get the place leased, then give them the additional monies.
Just wanna put the hundred and seventy-five in if they need it.
What's Alan saying, sixty-three?
He, he suggests a sixty-three, and I agreed with that, but if they don't rent the place, then give them the full amount that they need, so that's.
That's why today, if you wanna put a contingency map in front of.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. I was looking at two contingency on that to do.
So, you wanna fund sixty-three and contingent the rest of it?
Yes. Out of sixty-three minus the one seventy-five. One seventy-five minus sixty-three, I'm sorry.
What you want?
Yeah. So. Alright, so I'm gonna give him sixty-three here, that's gonna leave a hundred. And we'll get it somewhere. And, well, we'll, we'll work on that with the tenants here a little bit, I need to write a thing.
For Bricks's. It's not good on first.
I'm getting it.
And all that litigation is still ongoing.
Yeah, alright, okay, that's good. Okay, I'll keep looking.
So one twelve, one twenty-five, one twelve, one two five, we want it to tag into ten.
Yes. But I really think waste management has done a real good help in this whole situation.
Oh, really?
After Valley, yeah. After Valley, and that's why I'm in after Valley, because they spend a lot of time cleaning their place out. Had no cost to the county, a lot of time and money.
They had a lot.
They all could have walked, you know, get out of the mess, they had to look out for it.
Right. Okay, um, uh, litter? Looks like fifteen, nine thirty-six is asked with proposed funding of ten?
No, good with ten.
You're good. Good fifteen.
Uh, is that the program, they're going through community service and working with them?
Yes, sir. Eddie, did I hear you say ten, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm ten all separately.
Yeah, what's up?
I'd be good with the fifteen, so I guess we're up there between two.
No, no average.
We can average, Steve, you want me to put the fifteen in there?
I, I, I'd like to say good fifteen.
Okay, we, I can run a consensus call here a little bit.
Average or average in places with trash.
This, the second litter control for the third piece, that's your litter control internal.
Yep, I think they buy that.
There's a rest of.
Oh, clothes.
Clothes.
Mended bags and all that.
Right, that's supplies, yeah.
Two thousand five.
We still have adopt the highways in it?
Yep. But that's not.
It's not active at the state. I mean, it is active.
Well, one of the west scouts, we have a road.
Yeah.
Yeah, Maycrish Academy has a road out there in Maycrish.
Um, so this, so Parks and Rec, uh, historically, uh, receives half of the hotel motel?
I think it should be more than that.
Well, Alan's proposing, so it's all based on the revenue, remember?
I know.
We get eight hundred thousand, so half of that would be four hundred thousand, if you wanna give Parks and Rec half.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think they need to continue to receive half of that money.
Oh, yeah, I, I totally agree. I just don't believe CBB should get half, but that's.
You don't have any control of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
Like the library.
Steve, HD, you get it four hundred?
You have?
Okay.
None, it's gonna be more.
It will be, they'll get it. Um, Parks and Rec General Fund? They asked.
I mean, Steve, what's, I mean, is this just a general operating?
General operating as well.
Um, I'd like to see more than ninety.
So Alan's offering one forty in his number, uh, they asked for one ninety?
Well, I, if they ask for it, I think that's.
Well, understand, their revenues are strong.
Yeah, but they have a lot of money.
They do. Honestly, they're financially, they're okay. They truly are.
They're in very good shape.
So what do you think?
I think they would have one forty. Yeah, I'm okay with that. If, if I really felt that, that they were on a level or in trouble, I would have given more of it.
But honestly, they're strong.
Those are the new parts, they may need more.
Oh, they will.
Well, right now, for this year.
Yeah, they're not, not this year.
Right. Wow, what about capital?
Every consensus, everybody's one forty?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, capital funds, they asked for sixty-seven. And Alan's proposing sixty, he's okay with sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Well. What do they, what do they spend it for?
Yeah, capital?
What are they gonna spend it on?
It's all on county parks, uh, some of it in Falkland, some of it in Warhouse and stuff.
Be like playground equipment and that kind of stuff?
I don't, I don't, no playground equipment in that, no.
So kids by George didn't ask for anything this year?
They don't get anything, I think that, that's closed. Well, they haven't had it open, and nobody can get a wallpaper file on it.
Yeah. That's a little bit of an issue right now.
Yeah, it's like a woodwork grill.
They did have, there was seventeen thousand in that request for painting the trailer field, which is county property. And, uh, I hope at some point during this next fiscal year, we can look at working with the, the door event, possibly the city, to paint the parking lot field, talking with the, the ballfields on, it's been a need for a long time. And I'm thinking that seventeen, you can talk to their debt company, with that trailer, because they'd all be there, and probably get that cheaper at debt company.
So that's what the additional monies is for, to pay for the trailer?
Seventeen of it, yeah, of that.
Of the sixty-seven. Right, cause originally it used to be fifty, well, sixty-seven, so it's seventy for the trailer, right? Does that hold them to that or not?
Well, uh, if they requested for that, I think that money needs to be spent, obviously, I mean, you always spend the money that comes from the county and county park, you know, so.
Okay, so the consensus was sixty-seven for their capital, which takes us to the Apollo. They're asking for a hundred and forty, Alan's got them at five.
I, I think that we were very generous with them on our, our.
I'm gonna see if we get one hundred.
One, one key.
Two hundred fifty.
Two hundred thirty-five. Over two hundred thousand.
I, I, I remember with him in Charleston, and I, I just wanna say, they, they have a lot.
With Mike?
Yeah, yeah, he was in art center, down there, we were down there last week, I talked to him a couple times. They have some big projects they need to fund.
Oh, I know.
Um, they need a hundred and ten thousand percent. Uh, so I was suggesting a fifty, so they could try to fund the other half, to get the new sound system in there. With Marquee coming, and a lot of, that, that'll bring a lot of larger events, it'll bring a lot more people to them. I don't know.
Yeah, they could work on the front, front of the building pretty good.
Well, the outside looks great, and when this Marquee comes, uh, they're looking at a new, like ribbon cutting type deal in October. I just thought we helped them towards that sound system with some money, they could try to get something from the city or somewhere else, or the other half of that. That could be a real.
That's a one-time capital wow, right?
I hope they go into some of these, uh, corporations.
Well, I also suggested to him to start having movie nights and some other things.
Yeah.
To generate revenues.
Yeah, you did it.
Uh, what he came forward.
And, and he said he's on board with that, and that, I'm, I'm gonna give them some more suggestions and work with them some more to help them build that up. You know, because they, they focus mostly completely on just plays and things in the past, but there's a lot of revenue being left in.
I noticed, uh, one of your suggestions, that it was to buy the sound system, was to rent the sound system.
It's for bigger events. Yeah.
Steve, Joey, you were texting, they got fifty thousand dollars in our money?
I mean.
Fifty thousand.
So what do you get from cares? I mean, because money was given to him for the Marquee, he had the last year, why didn't he?
That was two hundred thousand, cause he's.
That narrows down the budget.
I'd like to see a good, good deal also. I would get to take it out coast severance.
Yeah.
So, and I hear HD and, and Steve at fifty on this one, I have Mr. Ricker and Eddie at five. And Mr. Martin Hart at twenty-five, do you really wanna average that, or you wanna come to some sort of?
What was the average?
Well, I probably, I would tell you, sir. So you, what'd you say, Jim, twenty-five?
Yeah. Yeah. In the middle.
It comes to actually twenty-seven thousand, and you get out of it.
I'm okay with point seven, you want, you want to do it at around five? Coast severance.
So, do you want five out of General County, and do you want the difference, you want twenty-two out of coast every time, and what do you want, or do you want all twenty-seven?
I take it all out of coast seven.
And not fund them at all out of General County?
Sure. I'm open to the stuff. What's the difference, point one?
Yeah.
Yeah, you see, I, because they're only different down to three million.
You started, you started some new numbers down through here.
Yeah.
Yeah, coast severance.
I think coast severance is very good.
Yeah, there's money sitting there, we're not, but. We're going to have contingency.
Right. Okay, hold on, let me ask you a dumb question, if the coast severance is separated from our regular budget, and there's money left over in that, at the end of fiscal year.
It rolls right back into coast severance?
Right back into coast severance, it's going to come in more than double with, with, so.
It is this year, that's correct, and these are, these are one-time contributions to outside agencies, so, um. It doesn't necessarily come back next year. It's not a red card, it's understood, and in your, I mean, you said a pattern, obviously, that I began with this, and just the purposes of optimization, I don't remember where you were. Well, right now, they're growing, and they should soon be self-sufficient, as I, I like to try to get these projects to where they're, they're not nickeling down and taking ten years to get there, get it online, and get them to make double money, that, that, hand up, not a handout.
This is a spin-off from the ARCA money there, because everybody's flushed their money and gave those money out, now they expect, that's why the requests are a whole lot higher this year than they had.
You noticed that, huh?
Obviously, because, yeah, so. That's a huge building, that's, that's, it's an old building, and it takes a lot to maintain this facility, I'm not sure there'll ever be substitution.
They come with right work, yeah, but this is, you know, we.
I know they're working hard, there's no, there's no doubt about that, and they do a lot of nice things down there.
It's a hole, it's a hole.
Yeah.
It's a hole. You look at Maryland Theater, they do well, and they've got much money, they put it, but.
Right.
Yes, and look at their, and look at their venues.
You gotta, you gotta make a venue to make money, you can't just have a venue that's partially done, and think it's going to make money, it's not, and honestly, at the end of the day.
Ray Charles I went to, the Dillards I went to, I mean.
They have big comedians over there, and things like that, too.
Well, they've had Ron White, they've had Ron.
Last week, and so.
Yeah.
They're the only way to.
Way to.
They got the others.
Tracy said she thinks they got two hundred and fifty thousand, plus they got fifty thousand more, so they've gotten three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
On their appropriations thing, I think, I thought she even said they got four.
I think they got five thousand from the council, off of their budget as well.
All right, Boys and Girls Club, uh, they've asked for forty-five thousand, um, Alan's recommendation is ten?
I'd like to see him go with the twenty or thirty.
Yeah, I'm cool with twenty.
Uh, twenty's fine with me.
Nineteen, thirty.
About twenty-five.
I bet twenty-five. What were we last year?
We gave them ten, and they're asking for forty-five, right?
How much they got last year?
This, we have it, we got it here.
I'm going with twenty right now, I'll, I'll come back.
I like that. What's your?
Yeah.
Steve, you said twenty-five? Roundhouse?
I don't know, should we give them any money?
Well, I, I'll just say this, it was suggested just give fourteen, that's been, been given.
I was for insurance, was it?
Yes, and that's what we're asking for, the insurance doubled, the insurance is twenty-eight thousand, last year, we covered the other half of the insurance on our own, because after we requested the money, it doubled. We took almost all of our savings.
Is that through, uh?
West Virginia Corp, and, and it doubled because of, I think, the, the evaluation.
Yes, they said the place is priceless, yeah, so, so basically, and this is one of sixteen national landmarks in West Virginia, it's, it's, it's a big deal, um, but the insurance, like I said, doubled, and we had to take that out of our savings and pay a little half, because we, definitely, we'd already asked you, you guys had given, and we paid it, which wiped us out pretty bad on, on our money, um, so, we really needed this.
You didn't do anything better?
We need insurance.
If that's what the insurance bill is, I have no problem.
That's what the insurance bill is, we need it.
I have no problem.
We didn't ask for anything else, other than that at this point.
I agree, twenty-eight thousand.
And, and we did just get the bids back on the, uh, elevators and steps, we got a note for the elevator steps, not concrete, but the elevator steps, so that will be moving along anytime now.
Okay. I'm okay with it.
Eddie?
Yeah.
Don't push drive, folks.
Uh-huh.
I'm going to have that. They, and they cooperate with you.
Being to me.
Oh, well. Here we go, time. All right, sorry.
Very.
Warden cabin, um, they've asked for ten.
Is that for you?
They gave it, you're offering, Alan's offering two.
What's that, ten?
Yeah. Well, they, they just upgraded the electric service, now they're getting ready to replace the well pump, the well, the well pump is out, uh, they wanted to, uh, building the top of the well pump and stuff, and replace the roof on the pavilion, and it's all volunteer labor, so.
Supply.
Supply, I'm, I'm good at five thousand.
Five thousand, huh?
Yeah. I'm good at that, I think we can accommodate that.
With fifty thousand.
Right. Apple Harvest?
I've, I have never been a supporter of the Apple Harvest, I've never been a.
Till, till they step up their program, I think.
Yeah.
Take a number zero.
Well, why? I don't just, I don't.
I think it's a great community event.
Yeah.
My daughter participates, and it's wonderful.
I bet it's great.
Youth fairgrounds, they do the parade, I mean, it's.
They generate revenue with it? Where, where do they get their money from the fund at the beginning, because I know four thousand dollars is all due to the whole thing.
Brands, they sell answers and programs and stuff.
I mean, who would give them a thousand dollars on, take that?
What we give them last year?
They would really manage a problem, they would not let this place in pay, uh, there's an issue with the ad.
You agree?
See, Martsburg placed an ad on quite a big one-page ad, and they said they had to contribute so much, but they've seen a place of ad.
Anybody care to see their budget, I have it right here. No, anybody, I thought you were just asking what to do with the money? Yeah.
I did, I did.
Want to see it?
I'm okay with two thousand, Alan had, uh, recommended one thousand.
I was going to say twenty-five hundred, split the.
They requested five, and they split it in half, is what I was suggesting. I can do with, with twenty-five.
I can do with twenty-five.
Sorry. There are, there are a lot of folks involved in that.
There it is.
More than twenty.
God, man. Being a hundred and fifty thousand over you. Landmarks?
Well, that's it.
That's HD.
What is it, Landmarks?
Um.
Fifty-one oh six.
Yeah, I like it. Well, it, it had a breakdown, eh?
When we get it?
They wanted TVs and, and, sorry, man.
It's okay, I mess with Alan, look, I won't.
That rodeo is expensive, man. That, that's a big line, I might notice on there, where you cost a ton of money, they make no money off.
Yeah, Apple, Apple.
A road, a bike line, where you, of course, eleven thousand, something like seven thousand bucks.
Rodeo.
That's what I, I would take it, yeah. Expense, then fourteen two fifty, they estimate revenues fifteen hundred. Yeah, drive a rodeo, you got a lot, you got a lot of extra money.
Talk to us about this whole thing.
Well, in their, in their request, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, that's the one meeting, but, in, in the one meeting I sat in on, they, they basically told me about their request, and, and they, they got places in this building over here, I guess, we can put a bit of old management. I hear he's got it, and, so, they had said they needed, like, some office equipment and, and some other things, um.
Which they do, and Gary can help them, I, I believe.
I mean, they even had, like, rack cards and stuff like that over here, and I was thinking, this is cards, it'll be CBB, CBB don't pay for those things, like for roundhouse, when we do the record, we have to buy them ourselves, and then CBB and streets, that makes no sense.
Yeah, with their money?
We, yeah, we, we made it by with our money, we go to progressive printing and pay for ourselves around.
That should be CBB.
I'm sorry?
It should be.
Landmarks people.
Especially the money they have.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope they need it.
But, yeah, they got twelve hundred for a computer, two hundred for a printer, two seventy for a desk, hundred twenty for a desk and a chair, I mean, do we got any desks and chairs laying around with this remodel, we couldn't just give them desks and chairs, we couldn't get the money?
We, if, if the council wants, we can in kind of, I'd say.
See, that's, that's what I was.
We shouldn't do that, because I anticipate additional agencies being able to use that, you know, facility.
Yeah.
Because we already had.
The gates, yeah.
Dog is ready for the rush.
Yeah.
Right, you got to read it.
Okay, well, she only had one room, and really had, like, one chair and nothing in there, which I understand, and what I said to her with budget request was, pretty sure the county probably has some furniture, a computer, some things laying around that we could, we could outfit you without having to give you the money to buy it yourself.
But if you wanted to do this, we can accommodate with desk chairs.
Yeah, I would say that, but I also know that, uh, one of the main things is the insurance on the moving cabin. There was a W, there was a West Virginia Corp price line on it, what was, what was that one?
For the cabin? I forget whatever, it's, it's like twelve fifteen.
Was that the first item, West Virginia Corp?
Look.
Third, third part down.
I'm looking.
Twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred. Twenty-three hundred is insurance, give them twenty-five hundred.
There's no opportunity for them to, to really raise monies, but that, that needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, I'd say forty-five hundred.
Yeah.
All their employees are gone.
Yeah.
Everyone paid you forty.
So, we give them twenty-five hundred, cover their insurance as well.
Yeah. That's a good change.
And we'll give them in kind contribution.
Yeah, right, right, give them their computers and desks and chairs, yeah, because that's what I said to her, I was like, you guys shouldn't have to buy this, the county should be able to get you those things, you provide them free internet, free telephone, eating and cruising stuff, so now you're talking about some desk, and the whole computer monitor, with the facility.
Yeah, and, and previous to that, the historical society, uh, allowed them to be in their facility.
Oh, is there plans for the rest of the jan?
No.
Okay. Okay, uh, CBB, uh, this is the other half of the eight hundred, so, four hundred?
Yeah, four hundred, that's only one hundred.
Right, it comes for purposes of a balance budget, four hundred?
Yes, because that's what you gave them.
Right.
Right, so we put it over on there, that's the special side, the revenue side.
The library, so, this is, this is carved in stone with the, with the special act, the contribution is nine hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars.
We have it.
Yep, you don't have a choice.
Nope. We're the only county that's other than that?
Nah, there's one more.
Oh.
I'm going to say it's Cal.
Their library is nice.
Meals on Wheels?
You gotta watch, their president, I tell you, she loves to tell people what to do.
That's good, I suggest we fund them at three thousand, they request.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
A lot of people that need that, and more emotionally than they do personally.
I tell you, they're working hard to, one, improve the menu and keep the menu current with, you know, inflation and all that.
My mother gets that shit every day.
My, my mother and father-in-law, they begin.
See, that's another thing, I mean, it's all volunteers, except for the, in a separate circle, that's, the liberal.
The kitchen people, and the director, Diane.
So, how do you feel about Sea Cap Loews and Fishes?
They asked.
They asked for three, Alan offered one.
Well, I'd say three.
I'm all right with three.
I'm all right with three as well.
They do good stuff.
I, last year, I think I abstained for, well, because Sea Cap offered rental assistance, and I had a tenant that year, and, not that it's going to make any difference, I just, you know.
I had that one year too, but not anymore.
I didn't have it last year, the year before I did, I just, not reserved my space, I didn't want it to sound self-serving, but I will, I, I will do the three, but I will remember when, when it comes around, say, I can't do that for you, I mean, because I have to take a look for it.
Hospice?
Well, first, clear on Washington, I know that, and twenty-five hundred dollars to hospice, it's nothing, but, yeah, where do you got it?
I'm good with the point, though. Or two, either one? Yeah, twenty-five. Yeah, I'm good with that, so.
Hospice.
Uh, Red Cross, so, this is, they asked for, uh.
Yep.
I'm on board for zero, in my local office.
Yeah.
Um, they provide a lot of services when somebody's burnt out, they, they're, they're there for the fire trucks league, they give people in hotels, they give them a food voucher, they give them a food voucher, um, uh, I, it, it's a very good service, I've seen it firsthand.
So, where, where does this going to go to a national agency?
I don't know exactly where it goes, it's not the, the money that's.
But I'm not saying they're not an official thing, but we don't, not having a local office, I just wonder where the money goes, that's, you know, they, they got telephones and.
Which is, what they did is regionalize, so they can, oh, yeah, you know, I'm saying, instead of having an office in.
Every city.
Every county, you have it. So, where, so they represent even, or Virginia and, and, so it's going to the rest of Virginia?
Greater Shandau Valley.
Greater Shandau, it has a regional office, you know, and I get that for benefits, which, which really could be some more money to start. Yeah, they actually cut their overhead down by doing that, so, I, I'm just saying, I know how important they are.
Alan suggested twenty-five, twenty-five.
I'm good with twenty-five.
Okay.
All right, good, right in.
Oh, yeah.
HD?
Yeah.
Carson?
With, uh. I'm good with more, and I agree with that.
I had given more, but I had pulled it from what I thought, so.
Have you any other expenses?
Right, well, well, when I originally went through this, I had pulled the, pulled the Red Cross and dropped it with Carson, if we're going up there, then I guess I put back down there, trying to make it equal out, right?
That's how budgets work.
That's right.
So, I'm good at five hundred.
Five for everyone?
Yeah.
Senior Services?
In fact, yeah.
Thirty-seven six.
Thirty-seven six.
That's correct. And that's what Alex brought.
I need forty.
I'm good with thirty-seven six.
Yeah, they get a lot of benefits from us. No, I'll do thirty-seven.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Transit Authority? Sixty plus.
Can we get them another sixty?
They asked for one fifty, you gave them sixty, Alan proposed sixty.
That's right.
What's the difference? I mean, all the difference will...
They asked for one, they gave them sixty.
I'm good with sixty.
Yep.
Jim says sixty, that's it.
They're gonna... They're gonna have part of a chunk here to try to fill in.
And the last one, that's your vehicle payment, but, um, seven hundred fifty thousand.
Just take the coverage.
The millions will be accounted for.
Oh.
So we need seven fifty to satisfy the debt service. And you remember the conversation we had just recently, when we have total vehicles come in and any of those insurance recoveries, we all leave those into this capital account.
I, I think we ought to keep the capital account at the, at the current cost.
What's Alan saying?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. Okay. Give seven fifty.
Are you good with that, Gary?
Yeah. This, this year, we're fine. We've... I do not anticipate any, um, vehicle need to replace new, other than accidental stuff. Fleet's in great shape right now. So I need, I still have my mouth, one pickup truck I need to deal with that we talked about. As soon as that's done, right now, we're, we're in shape.
So what's the seven fifty cover? Covers the debt service on the existing notes for...
Oh, this is, oh, I got you.
We, we, we form that rotation.
Uh, yeah, I got you. So you have a carrying note that you carry as a payment to the vehicles that exist?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, now, let's go back up to contingency. Looks like everybody, Mr. Barnhart's off a little bit. Number different, but go back to that address and the requests in the budget that we talked about. Um, that we, when they got here, you're just giving about eight hundred thousand dollars, give or take. Um, Alan mentions and asks that I speak to his, what he's offering. He's offering three hundred thousand dollars, which was half of the Hedgesville twenty-by-seven firefighters, if the fire board would come up with the other half. He's offering one home confinement officer additional to what we currently have. He's funding two increases in salary at emergency services, uh, to both the emergency manager and the admin person, as well as funding a fifteen hundred dollar increase for a, um, training coordinator supervisor, uh, a case manager for the data report center, and a assistant prosecuting attorney for the prosecutor's office, that five hundred seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars.
We got about eight hundred thousand.
You do? You do?
Well, we, we added a couple more there.
You did? Not much. You've got a hundred and twelve thousand that you added to contingency for, uh, solid waste. That's the only thing that I documented that we need back in contingency. The other was co-severance.
What, what about, uh, this, this, if Trudy asks for another employee or something?
Yes, or a raise.
Yes, or a raise.
So historically, this body never discusses pay raises right now? That typically?
After.
E- even if...
That's how it pushes it.
Always after the uncovered fund balance comes in and you know your cash stance, you revisit that? Um, the, for, for purposes of actual raises?
I got you.
Typically don't even entertain.
Yeah, those, those columns are locked.
I got you.
But they do their, but they still ask for it.
I didn't remember what had been said about that. That's, I, I remember. So what's it come out to?
If you, if you want to fund...
I can go second.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
Um, the training officer, uh, in, in emergency services is absolutely needed. It's been needed for quite a while to, to be able to keep up with their training and to do their training, which may in fact end up being a lieutenant's position that's up to them.
That's fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so, um, the three hundred thousand, I'd like to, I'd really like, cause I'm not finished with their discussion with the fire board. I think that, uh, we really need to throw down them a little bit. If we're successful with that grant, then we won't need it. That one will be, uh, supplied. It will be left over. But if not, I'd still like for us to have that one available, train the fire board, change its position. The other thing is the emergency manager, I think what they were looking at, about a six thousand dollar increase. You know, and I know that in planning...
Salary?
Yep. In planning, uh, Alan gave, uh, gave one of the planners a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar bump for his floodplain manager certification, in which, uh, the emergency manager has that certification. So I would like to give him that bump as well, but that's it. And also, the admin, uh, is taking some classes that will be able to expand her abilities, uh, through image board. I'd like to give her that fifteen hundred dollar bump, but that's it, I'm going for that. Not the six thousand. By just looking at across the board, the, the floodplain manager was at a fifteen hundred dollar bump for Nathan. Uh, in Paris, I don't think.
So if that grant comes through, that three hundred thousand isn't needed, so you said, but you can keep it there to maybe fund another fires?
Uh, well, we gotta see what we're financially on. I won't commit to that today, but... Because at the end of that three years...
We still have funds.
Still got to validate.
Correct.
Yeah.
So Eddie, if I understand, you're proposing forty-five hundred dollars instead of the thirteen-two-seventy-one for emergency management? Fifteen hundred for all?
That's correct.
Any, any re- for certification, maybe five hundred?
Uh, it was recommended, I think, fifteen hundred, well, I saw it somewhere. Even if you give the grant for the firefighters, we're still gonna have to increase the salary of the, the existing ones that are out there, because they're gonna change the...
I've got a fifty-six hour. It's in there. It's included in...
Yes, sir.
You're right, Danny, that, I mean, whenever somebody gets another certification, that salary increase is only five hundred.
Uh, it was Alan's recommendation that he went to fifteen hundred, one might have, somewhere along the way.
That's recurrent, but that's something you've already done.
Yeah.
So it's already done for planning?
That's done.
For Nathan?
Yeah.
It's, he's already pa- he just passed that, he certified. Assuming you're talking, we're not placing with that, that was already finished, right?
The people who got fifteen hundred dollars, they feel like a five hundred. I don't know, it's sure he was a five hundred.
That's, that's why I put the value there. Anyway, regardless, I mean, uh, I, I'm, I'm okay with the fifteen hundred dollar bump on both of them. Uh, the emergency manager and the admin and the, uh, training officer.
Is that the consensus for everyone to take it from thirteen-two-seventy-one to forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
We, our consensus for three hundred thousand for earmarking this for the paid firefighters at Hedgesville?
Yeah. If that is a doable.
Can you get five hundred?
So the drop from thirteen thousand to forty-five hundred?
Yep. There were three, there were three, there were three salary adjustment requests in there, H D. There was one for fifteen hundred for the training officer.
Right.
There was six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars for your emergency manager and three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars for your admin.
Instead of that, it's just fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
All three. The proposal. Okay. I think when you, you know, you look at, start. Given those raises out to other employees and not to the rest, create subs.
There's a reason why it's going to be, because of the additional certi- certifications.
Yeah, but it's down, you know, the suggestion.
Um, how about the home confinement officer at ninety thousand? Do you want to fund that?
Yes.
Okay.
But that ha- I mean, honestly, that has to be charged.
Yeah, that, that, uh, that directly shows on the, uh, Joe Bill.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine with it too, but, I mean, obviously, if the need calls for it, we don't have to hire it unless it needs there. And you just hired the two, the waiting list was forty-nine.
Yeah.
And you figured it was twenty per person, so.
That's why it's going in contingency.
I'm saying that waiting list is gonna grow again, even after the two new people.
Is, is that reoccurring? Or is that, is this the first time outfitting and all that, and then it recurs a lower amount?
Yes.
Or is this, or is this just a salary plus benefit?
Salary plus benefits.
So when we actually first hire one, it's only a little higher, right? But you're, you're outfitting?
Okay. That would not, would not come out of there, but it's just, that's just the salary benefit.
Okay.
Um, and then the A P A for the prosecutor's office. Consensus that it's approved?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So the new earmarked contingency is five sixty-one, three ninety.
Right, forty, solid waste.
Solid waste. Oh, the one, what? No, that's just there, so I need to add that. So then, then solid waste is one twelve, one twenty-five.
Correct.
That's six seventy-three, five one five. You can see you've got about eight hundred. And it, the entire eight hundred can go in contingency, but you're earmarking six seventy-three, five one five. Your stuff.
Yeah, we put it all.
You can. I mean, as long as there's not, I mean, I'm gonna, Mr. Barnhart, your number that's different, do you remember where it was?
No.
You and Steve both, so we've got, you want me to run?
Yeah, we can find it.
I can. It was an agent outside.
Yeah.
Where are you looking for?
So you're, you and, you and Mr. Barnhart both have some differences funding. Uh, Eddie and Jim are on the same page. H D's on the same page, so you and Mr. Barnhart, you're on, we have some numbers different.
Yeah.
Did you mark yours, Steve? Do you know where I'm looking?
Yeah.
I'm just on the outside agencies.
Right.
The one of them was the boys club. I said twenty-five instead of twenty. One of mine was the boys club.
That should be...
He's got that one over there. Come on, come on, right there, show Steve.
Go to the right.
I'm just looking for the boys club right here.
It's right there.
You're on.
Go back.
All right, I'm sorry.
Right, so highlight it.
Yep, okay, Steve. Do, does, does the council want to run consensus, or Steve, do you want to adjust?
Or are we going with the, this one? I think it ought to be choices for the one. I, I believe in them.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Whitaker, I can take your highlight off?
Yes, sir.
And the other one? Solid waste. Fifty-three, thank you, sir.
Fair enough. Oh, Steve, you... Yeah, make a ten number.
Well, let's put the difference at twelve.
Yeah.
Which one was that one?
Solid waste.
Solid waste, solid waste, right?
On the litter.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good at twelve.
Yeah.
I thought it was twelve-five, half between ten and fifteen. In my...
All right, so eight fourteen, one thirty-one goes into contingency with, and I'll, I'll summarize it all for you, but six seventy-three, five fifteen is earmarked, so that'll give you just a couple hundred thousand dollars of true contingent loans.
Left over.
Left over, that's right.
Well, then you gotta get out to the co-severance.
We will. Well, I'll work, it, it's not set up in here, but I'll add this. There's just a couple of individuals, it's okay if I can add them outside of here.
You say you gotta be... And then two hundred thousand's money that we could do whatever we choose to do in the course of the fiscal year.
That's exactly correct. So when you look across whoever's sitting in the cabinet?
We needed to hire the deputy we could out of that money or whoever.
Or, or you have a bus to pump somewhere and...
Right. Right. There's contingency of seventy-five for airport.
So, so of the, hold on, bring it just down. That's what I forgot about that. So you have a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars un- not spoken to in contingency. Mr. Whitaker, you're proposing seventy-five thousand of that for the airport?
Yeah.
Cases, city?
Big case, yes, but as it's read.
If it allows.
If it allows, yes.
If it doesn't, then it's pointless.
Right.
And that point is to the airport.
Well, no, but it is, it is, because it's, it's like that, they lose everything. So your new bottom line is seven forty-eight, five one five. And eight one four one, you now have a whopping sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
What was the amount at the beginning, eight what?
Eight, eight fourteen, one thirty-one.
Okay.
You've got six seventy-three, five one five described in, on the right, and then with solid waste, and I'll summarize that, make it look good. And then seventy-five thousand for the airport?
Yes, sir.
Um, leaving you sixty-five, six sixteen, true liquid money laying there that's not a sign. And you are balanced. Forty-nine million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Hope that the testaments will...
Everything works.
They're loved.
Oh, love.
I will bet you whatever you care to shake.
Bet you a dozen doughnuts.
That's right. That's right. So I can dress this up and get everybody free copies on their desk during your meeting Thursday morning. And, you know, meet with the customs officers Thursday, the...
Yes.
And tomorrow's meetings, unnecessary.
Yep. So tomorrow, those, you'll be here.
You can be here if you want.
No, no, I mean, I got plenty of things.
Don't wear a tie. Thought you made me feel it. Okay.
You know, she said it was casual one day. I didn't know.
We're gonna charge you for wearing a tie. True, man, that is bad. Um, so that concludes the budget session, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. It seemed to be balanced, uh, to this degree, and we will finalize it come Thursday with the elected officials. And we have any items from the public?
The public?
Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, we're in recess.
We are in recess.